Couple minutes.
Yeah. There's my alarm reminding me.
Oh, alarms for everything, Jesus.
Tucker, what's the limit on this, on this call?
Not sure. I know we have the premier version, so 100 is the minimum.
Things like 500.
Oh, is it really? Wow.
We don't get there.
Are we doing two minutes or three?
Three.
Okay. We've done both. All right.
Okay. Tucker, are you ready? And we're recording?
We are recording.
Said, okay, good. So I'd like to call the meeting to order this public hearing and meeting of the Board of Finance. Judy, could you do the roll call, please?
Steel butt neck. Judy Neville, Tom Schulte.
Here.
Okay, Amy Carroll.
Here.
George Blavell. George on?
I expect him to be.
All right, Todd Lavieri.
Yep, here.
Chris Labrie.
Here.
Michael Chen. Maria Weingarten.
Here.
She's here, yeah. Robert Hamel.
Here.
Victor Alvarez.
Here.
And our first selectman, Kevin Monahan. Do is, does anyone know if George is coming or do we need to see?
George is joined.
Oh, good. So all present. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Okay. Well, welcome and good evening, everybody. We're going to kick off our public hearing with comments from our residents and our taxpayers in just a minute. Some of you have asked and sent me notes to get a brief overview of the town's budget process and where we are. So before we get started and before Judy reads the notice, let me just take a couple of minutes and just quickly go over the summary and update as to where we are in our budget process. I think as many of you know, from an annual operating expense point of view, this process begins in the fall with preliminary working sessions and planning. The departments submit their budgets based on their needs and their guidance and the guidance that they get to the selectmen for review in January. The selectmen then work on it, vote on it, send it over to us. We continue our detailed work on both the operating expenses and the capital needs throughout the month of February and into March. The capital needs are looked at really on a short, intermediate and long-term horizon. Obviously, many of the large capital expenditures that we have, like paving and roofs and ambulances and fire trucks and major building repairs and schools obviously are well-known and planned for years in advance. We have a public hearing tonight and then we'll finish up our work Thursday and then vote on the budget to send to the town council. The town council will review it at that point. They'll provide their input, send it back to us in April. We'll finalize a few things in May. Specifically, we'll finalize the amount to be raised by taxation. We'll set the final mill rate and we'll finalize our capital plan with a final vote in June. Speaking on behalf of the Board of Finance, we're very grateful for all the hours and hard work everyone in every department has put into this year's budget process under really very difficult circumstances. I'd also like to thank this Board of Finance, not only for all their time spent, but for all of the constructive creativity every single month. This board's job is to financially meet all the growing and important needs of our town and our taxpayers while trying to keep spending and taxes obviously in check. This is not easy. I am pleased to say that over the last three years, we've successfully kept the amount raised by taxes flat. We are close to being able to keep taxes flat again for the fourth year. We have a plan. We aren't there yet. We've got work to do tonight and Thursday. But we do believe the budget that we'll pass on to the town council later this week will achieve our goals, including funding the town priorities, such as education and safety and programs and so forth, maintaining the strong financial position that we need as a town. We're very close to these goals through all the really good collaborative work that's been done and through cash management efforts and focused spending disciplines really over the past four years. Through the spending and planning that we've done, we've not had to cut school programs or sports or arts or teachers or important social programs. We haven't cut police or emergency fire. And we've been able to do all this without really raising taxes. All the departments really did a great job to get us to where we are up to tonight. And I believe all the necessary expenses, both operating and capital needs that were requested will be met. We asked that in the areas of both human services and emergency management services, that money actually be added to the original budget request by the departments in order to make certain we met all those growing needs. The total budget at this point is roughly $154 million. In terms of our school, the budget will vote that we will vote on Thursday, invests $101 million in our schools to cover health expenses, operating expenses, capital and debt expenses, and all the other town-supported expenses for the Board of Education, including pension costs, 401A costs, lease equipment costs. I fully expect that we'll approve 100% of the Board of Education's operating spending requests for teachers, administration, health classes, sports and the rest, with the exception of two special appropriation requests. There were two future special appropriation requests for related expenses that we're going to discuss deferring at this point. As we told the Board of Education, we'll review actual COVID-related expenses once the details become clear. We also need to know what grants, potential federal reimbursements might be available. The details that we just don't have today. Once we have those facts and expense details, we'll work on a special appropriation, just like we did in October when we approved one and a half million dollar special appropriation for COVID. There's, but there's no need nor enough detail yet at this point to include those last two items. We'll support the needs once we have the details. Other than that, we support the budget. Regarding school start times, this Board of Finance does not make that call. We defer that decision to the School Board of Education and the School Administration. Our jobs to make sure that we find ways to afford, really the most important mission we have as a town, and it's to retain our excellent school system. And again, as I've said many times, our compliments again to the Board of Education and the School Administration in this town. In terms of capital expenses, we'll be working through all of those figures this week and over the next several months. Very comfortable with all the requests that have been made. Our debate will be around timing and whether to fund the capital projects through bonding at low rates or through tax revenues. Our capital spending's been tightly managed. And while we continue to invest in our infrastructure as directed by the selectmen, this includes continuous road repair, sidewalks, building, new solar projects that brought increased sustainability to New Canaan. From an overall financial perspective, we're also going to make sure this budget's financially sound. Our pensions will be funded. Our rainy day fund will also be funded in order to maintain our AAA rating while having funds available for emergencies as we recently had to manage through. And our debt is at the lowest level it's been in over 15 years. Our current debt is projected to be $95 million in June this year. One last point, the issue of preserving the 1913 portion of the library is also not within the domain of the Board of Finance. Our process for the library project has not changed. For us to take up the question of funding, we need three things. An agreed memorandum of agreement and understanding, an approval by the town's planning and zoning board, and a final budget. All three of these items are in process and I expect we'll have a package to review by mid-year. In summary, the current year has been a challenging one on many fronts. Revenues have been under pressure. We're down about $1 million in parking fee and permit revenues compared with prior year, for example. But overall, I have to say, I think we weathered the storm successfully. I should say so far though, because this year's not over, of course. But a big thank you to our town employees, our teachers, our selectmen, all of the incredible town volunteers, including our Board of Ed, our town council partners, and our parents and taxpayers who we serve every day. We met the urgent needs of our students and our schools this year, including that special appropriation. And that was to keep our teachers and students safe. Our jobs to make sure we're in a position to meet those kinds of needs in the future. We will maintain financial strength as a town while we continuously improve the assets, the services and the support that our residents expect. In short, we'll provide excellent value while helping New Canaan succeed financially in good times and in bad. With that as a very brief overview, I'll ask Judy Neville to please read the notice. And then I'll ask Tucker Murphy to help us kick off comments and input from our residents. Tucker, please walk through the process for tonight. Once Judy reads the notes. Over to you, Judy. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Todd. The Town of New Canaan Board of Finance Public Hearing on the 2021-22 Budget. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Finance of the Town of New Canaan via Zoom on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM on the tentative budget recommendations for the town and the sewer utility for fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Tucker.
Okay, so we have a few rules and protocol that we'd like everyone to adhere to tonight. This, we're making history. We're having our first public hearing via Zoom. So you can just bear with us. It's going to be a little tricky, but I think you're all acquainted with Zoom well enough that we can make it work. Our first request would just make sure that everybody is muted when you're not speaking and that all comments do relate to the fiscal 2022 budget. The Zoom link and the webinar ID were posted on the town website. If anybody is listening on channel 79 and would like to join live, the meeting ID is 85963358468 and the passcode is 211088. Again, this is all available on the town website. Speakers will be asked to provide your name and address when you speak. Each speaker will be allowed to speak for three minutes and comments must relate again to the fiscal 2022 budget. Speakers will be asked to use the raise hand feature in order to be called upon. The raised hand feature can be found in the reactions at the bottom of your screen. Note, you need to be in gallery view to see those. Or when you click the participants, you'll see there's a raise hand listed there as well. Anyone joining by telephone can press star nine and that will indicate that you would like to speak. I will call on people one by one, so please make sure your proper name is assigned to your square. And if you need to rename, that is also available, upper right-hand corner of your box. The chat function has been disabled, so all comments should be live or may be submitted by sending an email to bofdistribution@newcanaanct.gov. Again, we just ask that everyone remain muted unless you are speaking. And that's it. Thank you. So we can open it up. There's three pages of you all, so you're going to have to bear with me as I scan each page. I see Steve Somers.
In my lives, can you hear me?
Yes.
Lucky winner number one, and I'll get it started off far under the three minutes because I'm sure I saw the agenda. You have a lot to do. So Steve Somers, 610 Cheese Spring Road. Thanks for making the time for all of us this evening and hope everyone is well. My wife and I, we have a seventh grader Lily and a ninth grader Jack. And just wanted to take a quick minute to voice our support for passing the Board of Education budget in full, including fully funding healthy start times. I've spoken previously in support of healthy start times and am so grateful to see it finally reach this stage. Both our children will benefit greatly with this progressive move. And we also believe that this initiative will attract new families to our town as this clearly was one of the key reasons for our family to move to New Canaan. I also wanted to take a minute to express our sincere appreciation for how the Board of Education, the School Administration have handled the changes necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. The speed with which our, you know, school system pivoted to virtual and subsequently hybrid learning was clearly a monumental feat and one that provided a much-needed in-school learning for our children. You know, through both those actions, the Healthy Start Time Initiative, I think the Board of Education has demonstrated their willingness to follow advice of medical experts and to have the best interests of our students in mind, our kids. While unfortunately, you know, we weren't able to get this off and running last year, but derailed. Extremely grateful to see this initiative back on track and would like to once again reiterate our full support. Thank you all again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Moore. And please lower your hand when you've spoken. Heather? Oh, you need to unmute. There you go.
There you go. All good. Sorry about that. I've done it before. All right. Hi, Heather Moore, 10 Snowberry Lane. I'm speaking tonight to express my strong support for the Board of Ed budget, including the funding for healthy school start times. I first need to express my deepest gratitude to Dr. Letzey and our Board of Ed for safely providing more in-school, in-person learning in New Canaan than the vast majority of Connecticut and the entire country. In dealing with the COVID crisis in our schools, Dr. Letzey has dedicated unparalleled leadership, commitment to the well-being of our students and staff, and a tireless resolve to educate himself and our community on the latest medical recommendations and wellness initiatives to keep our community healthy. The Board of Ed has presented a very conservative, thoughtful budget for next year that continues to focus on the well-being of all of our students, both now and in the future. The proposed change to start times was developed in the same way our COVID mitigation strategies have been developed by following advice of medical experts, scientific research and the tangible logistics of New Canaan schools. You know, after a very difficult year for all of us in the community, thanks to Dr. Letzey and the Board of Ed, our school system has been a constant positive force in our children's lives that has, has made this last year bearable for all of us. And then just to finish, I just feel like this is certainly not the year to make any cuts to the Board of Education's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. James Yale.
Yep. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Wow, I didn't expect to be so high up on the list. I mean, I just want to kind of go, I think many of you know my position on this. You probably received my emails as well. I think what is consistent in this, this start time initiative is how proponents stress that it's for the health of the students. And when they say that, they're referring to the health of potentially high school students, but they're not acknowledging the fact that this plan also entails making the elementary schools start at the earliest time in all of Connecticut, while simultaneously making this the latest high school start time likely in all of Connecticut. So I don't see how that is, that's, that services or benefits elementary school kids at all. I grant you that it might help high school kids some. But I just, I'm a little frustrated by the fact that no one on, on that side is even acknowledging that half of the equation. I mean, it's also disappointing that, I guess this is, I'm not sure how, how the process works here, but I don't know if the Board of Finance is, is able to address any questions. I know the Board of Education doesn't address any questions that are posed to them. But I guess what, what is, in this process, what is the Board of Finance's ability to kind of limit certain spending by the Board of Ed? Can the Board of Ed spend money on anything? Whether it's potentially detrimental to a significant portion of the, of the student population or not, the Board of Finance has to approve that? And they have no ability to deny that? I guess that process is, I'd appreciate it if someone on the Board of Finance can kind of explain that to me. The Board of Finance is supposed to be, you know, supposed to watch, supposed to be the minder of our, of our tax dollars. If our tax dollars are being spent in a way that, that it does not benefit the town, I just wish there was something, and I would think there would be something that the Board of Finance can do about that. I'd really appreciate an answer to that during the rest of the remainder of the meeting. And I think that's pretty much it. We're just looking, a lot of us are just looking for a healthy start time for all the students. Again, I stress all the students, not just high school students. And I wish the people on the other side would at least even acknowledge that. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Yeah, James, it's, it's Todd Lavieri. I will answer your question. I don't really like to reply to comments. I think it's important everyone gets a chance to say what they want to say. But I do want you to understand that when the Board of Finance provides us a budget, we approve the budget. Now, we can discuss certain things. We give them guidance on the amount of money to spend. We really have to support, you know, all the various, if, if they tell us they need, you know, school buses, they need 22 school buses. We, we, it is not, it is not only not our purview, but it is actually is not allowed for us to pick out individual items. We can reject a budget. We could cut a budget. But we, we believe in the Board of Ed and the administration that does an unbelievable job in the school district. It has for over 20 years to make the right decisions. Now, they asked for two special appropriations. That's different. So we're going to defer those now. But, but as it relates to the number of classrooms, all the various dimensions of the, of the school budget, that's their job. Then the Board of Ed's elected. That's your opportunity to meet with them. But when it comes to us, we work on all the big picture items with them, but we do not get into specific numbers of classes, a number of aids and all that sort of thing. We just try to understand where the money is being spent. We go through it with a fine-tooth comb, I will tell you, for months. And, but when it comes to the policy decisions, that's up to the Board of Education and the administration, not this board.
Okay, just, oh, I definitely, I really appreciate that. That definitely helps kind of put things in perspective. But I'm just wondering, can the Board of Ed spend money on anything they want at any time? Can they have all high school seniors take a European vacation as a learning experience? And that would have to be passed as well?
Again, I don't want to get a debate with you up.
No, 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 I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not debating you. I'm just wondering, you know, procedurally, if there's anything that can be done or do you just have to kind of approve it? It's not a criticism of you or the way the board works.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Now we're moving on to Jacomo Landy.
Hi, can people hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for your service on behalf of the New Canaan community and all of its residents. It's truly appreciated, especially in a year like this. In your role of annual budget reviews, I encourage you to take a hard look at three items. The first is the school budget for 2021, 2022. In particular, the expense allocated for a mid-year transition to new school start times. I've written to you separately about the specific issues and I would encourage you to discuss with the Board of Ed about removing this part of their budget proposal. This is easily done as it's a standalone issue with direct monetary savings delivered to town residents and taxpayers. The BOE should then be encouraged to run a more open and comprehensive process that includes the entire New Canaan community to determine what is best for all or as many as practically possible. That includes students, families, business and nonprofits. This process should highlight in detail any bottlenecks that exist to achieving the optimal result. And, and we as a community should work together to overcome this, to overcome those hurdles. Hopefully, a more equitable proposal can be concluded in time for a full year implementation for the 2022-2023 academic year. Point number two, mill rate. I understand we're thinking about increasing the expected tax collection rate to stabilize the mill rate. While I certainly support making this more reflective of historic patterns, we should not use this as an opportunity to hide underlying spending growth as such a move is a one-off opportunity, but growth in spending tends to be permanent. Point number three, long-term school budget. I know you've commented on this publicly about working together, but I'll just make the comment also about future years. I would encourage you to initiate a deep and meaningful dialogue with the school district about developments of expenses over time. My family and I were attracted to New Canaan for many reasons, including the schools. Despite this, we all need to understand that we have had roughly the same number of students in our district since the 2004-2005 academic year and perhaps earlier. During that period, our headcount numbers, which drive much of the expenses, appear to have increased pretty steadily. We should fully understand why this is taking place and see where meaningful efficiencies can be achieved. This can be done through consolidating activities with the town and it can be done by looking at what we may no longer need to offer or in-source within the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacomo. Jennifer Dalpe. Sorry if I'm not pronouncing it properly.
No, that's fine. It's Lepe. And sorry for the black background. I pulled over as I was driving, so I wouldn't be driving. So apologies and hopefully it doesn't look too ghostly. So members of the Board of Finance, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. And I completely understand what you can and cannot influence. I am having a bit of a deja vu. A year ago, I stood before you painfully asking to minimize the Board of Education's budget due to its inclusion of a start time scenario, not widely supported in the town as proved by two surveys. And at the time, a recently launched petition that garnered 100 responses in less than 48 hours and in less than a week, narrowed 500 comments, 500 signatures with 99 comments. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant 70 White Oak Shade Lane. Sorry, Tucker. And yet, here we are again. The same scenario has been included, but at 136% increase in cost over the original estimate. A recently launched petition, as of today at noon, has garnered again 100 responses, this time in a matter of hours, asking that the Board's budget, the Board of Ed's budget, remove the three-tier solution currently proposed. The results will be shared with the various boards as soon as the responses have been scrubbed for anonymity as some have requested. I'll spare you all the details of the rationales due to the letters I have sent and op-eds. I think we know the details, but focused rather on the financial aspect of this. When I was managing corporate budget, I always imagined the money was my own. And this is wise and practical. So I asked, would you spend it? And a large sum it is, at $1 million, without feeling confident it would help the overwhelming part of your family or well-being? Would you spend it if it wasn't well researched and diligence was conducted? What would you do if a contractor came back with 136% increase in cost? The answer would be no, and I can't imagine any of us would act differently. Based on the projections of the third tier, three-tier scenario in the budget and the ever-changing position on scenario costs as recent as last night, I don't know how many members of this board can feel confident in the numbers we're seeing today and how they compare to other scenarios that better support the overwhelming majority of our students. It is clear we still don't have a reasonable solution and the support behind the spend. The budget in its entirety, since we cannot break apart pieces, should not be supported. And I do have to say that I'm overwhelmingly filled with gratitude for the Board of Ed and the administration's work that they've done to keep our children in school. My children love going to school. It is the highlight of their day. This causes me great pain, but a lot of people have put in a lot of effort behind making sure our dollars are spent for the overwhelming majority. And that does not seem to be the case and it's hard to ignore. So thank you again for your time and sorry for the gloomy lighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got Kristen Bosson.
Hi, how are you? First of all, thank you, Tucker. It's nice to see you. I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of you. I know this is a lot. I Zoom all day long for work and I know it's not fun. So thank you for taking that extra time out this evening for a meeting and having us be able to talk to you about our opinions for the healthy start times for school. Secondly, I'd like to thank Dr. Letzey and his incredible staff, the teachers, his team. I have two boys. One is in fifth grade at Saks and one is in seventh grade at Saks. Both boys went through West School. And I have to say that I 100% support the healthy school start times and I've seen at firsthand how the change in start time for my seventh grader has dramatically affected his mood, his personality, his ability to eat breakfast in the morning. We've tried putting him to bed early. We've tried protein shakes in the morning so he can actually eat food before he gets onto the school bus. We've tried driving him to school. Nothing really helps at that age group. People don't realize with elementary's kids, when your kids turn 12, 13, 14, they need sleep. They're prone to fall asleep later. It's physically, that's what they do. And they need sleep in the morning. You talk to, you know, a slew of friends who have older kids to sleep on the weekends till 10, 11 o'clock during the day, and it's not because they're being lazy. It's because physiologically, their body develops during the nighttime and these are crucial growing years. I have my master's in public health, health behavior and education, and I really do believe in following the science. So while I understand that it may be harder for the elementary school children, when my kids were in elementary school, they bounced out of bed at six in the morning and I was happy. You know, you have that long time during the morning to be with them, but I certainly wouldn't feel terrible about putting them onto the bus early. I do understand it's a heavy lift for all of our community to come together and make a change, particularly if it's halfway through the year. But I 100% support Dr. Letzey, his experience, his team. I see Tiger Man there. I know that you can do this because you are awesome at what you do, Tiger, and commuting, communicating to us the bus routes and who's who, so I appreciate that. My husband grew up in New Canaan. We've been here for 12 years. We completely believe in this community. community, and we want to see it thrive, and we want to see our kids thrive. And just one example is my older son actually came to me very off the cuff and said, I feel so much better because I can Zoom in the morning when we were in the lockdown of COVID as a seventh grader, because he was able to sleep for 30 minutes extra a day, and he's like, I feel like a person again, like I can function, I can think. So that's what I want for our kids. And I know that those elementary kids, it is a little bit earlier, but you're gonna get to middle school eventually, and you're gonna see the pain in your kids' faces when they're having a hard time dealing with the emotional and physical changes that they're having as a young adolescent. It's hard. Life is hard in middle school and high school, so let's give them a shot by allowing them to sleep in, get a proper breakfast, and start the day ready to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsten. Next is Karen Willett. Karen? Okay, maybe she stepped away. Jody?
I had one on the screen there.
Hi Karen.
Okay. Um, okay, one second. So I am here to ask you to fully fund our education budget. Thanks for having us in this hearing. This past year, our schools have been the glue, holding many families together, especially families like mine, where both parents work. I think a lot of you do have kids in the school now, but if you don't, I hope you realize how extraordinary this year has been for our kids relative to the rest of the country. I think parents in this town know how lucky we are that our schools are open and our kids are thriving. We all have many friends and family whose children haven't attended in-person school for a single day this year. This past spring and all this year, our administrators and teachers have gone to incredible lengths to keep schools safely open. And I, you know, I, having been a PTC president for a few years, I've been close to, and attended all of the BOE meetings for a few years. I really think Dr. Lettsie and his staff have a pretty stressful job in normal times. They work for New Canaan parents, who, as we all know, demand nothing short of excellence. Their days are long in a normal year. I went to bed last night before the BOE meeting was over. I can't even imagine how difficult this year has been. So I wasn't planning to talk specifically about start times because I know that this board and Todd in particular does not consider itself responsible for education policy. But a few others have commented, and as the town council last year did essentially make education policy in their vote, I am speaking kind of more to the town council right now than to Todd. It is true that there are some parents asking you to cut this budget, even this year, when we all are kind of in love with our schools. And it's because of one program that they don't like, that Dr. Lettsie and the BOE have determined for two years in a row is the right thing to do. There's no way to make a decision like that without making some people unhappy. Lots of people applaud this decision, including anyone with a medical degree, but lots of people disagree and had every right to petition, right to speak to the BOE to ask them to reconsider. And they did, multiple times. But now is the time, that time for that has passed. The BOE and Dr. Lettsie took all of that feedback that you're getting in your inboxes into account, and they made a decision. It is not, as you know, the responsibility of the Board of Finance or the town council to cut the education budget with the aim of cutting a specific program. And there's no valid reason to cut the budget this year. I would consider it honestly an outrage if you do so after this year of incredible performance. What message does that send to our teachers, who practically overnight reinvented education to be delivered via Zoom, who wear masks all day long, teach in cold classrooms with open windows? My kid refused to go to school today because he said it was going to be cold because the windows would be open, and I told him it was 19 degrees out. Spend countless extra unpaid hours revamping lesson plans, including our high school teachers who pivoted overnight to a block schedule. Who has added more value to this town this year?
We need, Karen, we need to move on.
I didn't time myself for once.
That's okay, you're way over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jody Asaparty?
Hi. Thank you for your time. I am Jody Asaparty, 28 Fairdy Drive. My children are 15, 11, five, and three. This pandemic year, I have a New Canaan high school freshman, a fifth grader at Saks, a kindergartner at South, and a three-year-old at home. I feel qualified to speak to the issue at hand regarding changes to school start times, as I have a foot in every camp, and I will be in New Canaan Public School System for the next 14 years. I spoke last year at many of the town meetings during the budget process and continue to support our school district, Dr. Lettsie, and the change to school start times that are included in the current budget, which the Board of Education has already approved. Dr. Lettsie has been exemplary in his decisions over the past 12 months during COVID and has proven his deep commitment to all of our children. His ability to provide the best for all of our children has been outstanding, with in-person learning his priority whilst also providing excellent options for remote learners. I'm not sure how anyone can argue he is sacrificing one set of our children for the sake of another with school start times. I believe in the science which supports moving schools start times later for our teens and earlier for the younger children, which allows each set of children to learn when it is optimal for them. I'm excited for this change. It affects all of my children, and I think it will benefit all of my children. I fully support the proposed Board of Education budget, including the change to healthy school start times, and ask you to approve it as is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Schimmick?
Hi, I'm Anne Schimmick. We live at 47 Douglas Road. And I want to start just by saying thank you to all of you, you know, Board of Finance is holding this meeting tonight, and you know, the town council, BOE members who are on. We truly appreciate your service to our community. We have two children at South and one at Saks. I'm here tonight to ask you to fully fund the BOE budget for next year. Our town finances are strong. Like most, we moved here for the schools, and we would like our tax dollars to invest in new programs and initiatives each year. Given the increase for salaries and benefits for our incredible school staff that is part of their contract, continued cuts to the operating growth keep our schools from moving forward. We've seen an influx of new families moving to town this year for our school system. We cannot overstate our gratitude to Dr. Lettsie and the administration for keeping our schools safe and open and the vast amount of in-person learning that our children have experienced this year. Our administrators' leadership, creativity, and stewardship of our funds has immensely benefited our entire community. Once again, the work and careful planning of Dr. Lettsie and his team has put our school district above the rest. And our staff has shown courage in showing up to our schools each day to teach our children. Increasing class sizes or eliminating programs that would affect their jobs is hard to imagine after what they've done to educate our kids during a pandemic. I do think it's important to mention that, you know, as parents of two elementary students, we strongly support Dr. Lettsie's recommendation for healthier school start times. I sometimes feel there's a sense that elementary parents are against it, and that just simply is not the case. I think parents who have closely followed the issue really do understand the trade-offs and, you know, can see how it's a better system for all students. And it's honestly exactly the type of new program that's important for us to fund. It continues to attract residents to our community by highlighting that our schools do not only focus on test scores, but also on healthy and happy kids. And that we are a community that's willing to make changes when our superintendent recommends a system that's healthier for our children. Certainly, we've learned more than ever this year the importance of health and wellness. This is not the year to cut the BOE budget. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Jane Benton?
Jane, I think you're on mute.
Hi, I'm Jane Benton. We're at 106 Adams Lane, New Canaan. I have a New Canaan high school senior and a Saks seventh grader. I just wanted to start once again by expressing my gratitude to Dr. Lettsie and the Board of Ed for all they've done to keep our kids in school. We have many, many family members in California that have not stepped foot in their schools all year. It's hard to believe, with as fortunate as we are, that that is what's going on around most of the country. So we're very grateful for all the work that they have done to put that in place. We're truly blessed to live here. I just want to offer my full support for passing the budget in its entirety, inclusive of the funding for healthy school start times. I believe in the research that Dr. Lettsie and the Board of Ed has done to act in the best interest of all the students in our town. My own small-scale research at my own home during the pandemic, when the kids have had later start times, resulted in happier kids, no later bedtimes, and better grades. Please pass the budget in full, including the funding for healthy school start times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mike Seekhouse? Hope I didn't.
There we go. Hi. First of all, I want to thank you guys for all your hard work. I think it's been a very difficult year, as we all know, and you guys have outkicked your coverage in so many ways, shapes, and forms. And you really differentiated yourselves, ourselves, and the town of New Canaan. And it's, and we're being rewarded. We're seeing an influx of people from New York City, from surround, from surrounding areas, and we're all benefiting from higher real estate values. I think that I'm fully, first of all, sorry, 92 Parrish Road, I have four young children. I have a freshman in high school, I have two sixth graders, and I have a third grader at West School. And and we're blessed. I mean, we moved to this town for exactly what we're getting, and we're getting it. And I have relatives in Seattle who haven't seen the inside of a classroom in, in over a year, and they, they're asking us what we're doing so well, and I'm just referring them to to everything, all the emails we get and everything else. So we're truly grateful for what you guys are doing. That being said, I am fully in favor of supporting the earlier start times. I think we need to take advantage of the momentum that we've gained by differentiating ourselves from other towns and show that we are serious about not only, like someone else mentioned, scored test scores, but making our children feel a little better and know that we have Dr. Lettsie's back, because he has done an incredible job, he and his staff. So I think if we can show that we're serious about all kinds of stuff and take advantage of the momentum that we've gained this year, and we've all benefited. And I assume that the Board of Finance has to enjoy higher real estate values. I gotta think that helps somewhere along the line, you guys, and I think we need to reinvest some of those gains into supporting earlier start times. So thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Janey Conideris?
Good evening, everyone. Are we good?
We're good.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time and your service to the town. I'm Janey Conideris. My husband, Jason, and I have lived in New Canaan for 20 years. We're at 90 Beacon Hill. I'm here tonight to ask our Board of Finance to support the full 2122 school budget. Over the years, Dr. Lettsie and our Board of Education have done an incredible job guiding our schools towards excellence. And while the responsibilities of leading a top school district can be challenging during any year, I believe there's never been a more daunting 12 months than the ones we've all just endured. Last March, as COVID-19 emerged, many school districts were paralyzed. Schools closed and some never reopened, but as you all know, that was not the case in New Canaan. Seemingly overnight, our education system pivoted to a distance-learning platform. And while many students across the country lost months of valuable learning, New Canaan students did not. This past summer, Dr. Lettsie and our Board of Education followed CDC guidance, trusted the science, and worked tirelessly to implement new strategies so that our students could safely return to in-person learning in the fall. As part of this implementation, our school leaders recognized the strong need for our youngest learners to be back in the classroom. So it was our elementary students who returned first. They were given priority because our school leadership cares deeply about all of our students. For anyone to suggest otherwise is simply insulting. As you know, the 2122 school budget includes funding to follow CDC guidance to implement healthy school start times for our students. Changing school start times is an issue that has been thoroughly researched by our leadership. Dr. Lettsie and our Board of Education have studied various cost options, implementation strategies, busing constraints, faculty needs, community needs, and of course, the needs of each segment of our student body. This initiative has taken years, and although the cost of making this change is significant, it will make our children healthier and our school system better. Please support this budget in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Hendricks?
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the time. Sorry, I'm toward the end of the the trail here, so I'll keep it quick. So we're at 133 Spring Water Lane. Two children, one of whom is now a junior in college and went through the New Canaan school system, and one is a freshman at New Canaan High School. And I would like to support also the proposal for the Board of Education budget as proposed, and in particular, in support of healthy school start times. I think not new and novel, but just sharing my own personal experiences, raising children from infancy all the way through adulthood. The impact on sleep, the impact on emotional health, the impact on physical health cannot be underestimated. Both of my children are athletes, and I have seen their ability to balance a demanding athletic schedule as well as demanding academic schedule, as well as to be happy and healthy and well-adjusted students, be better supported when they have been well-rested. I would also like to add that I think it's very important in all of this to recognize that science is not up for debate. And while there are different children who may have different bio rhythms, in the aggregate, there's a reason that scientific trends exist the way that they do. And so while I don't dismiss the perspectives of parents whose younger children sleep in, et cetera, I think it's important to recognize that over time, you know, we have thousands of students who will go through our school system, and the science tells us that statistically, the significance of making this change cannot be underestimated on health, on happiness, on performance. And so in that vein, I offer those comments, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jess Hutter. I see a Ryan who would like to, who's raised his hand, but if Ryan, if you could please put your full name in your square, that would be helpful. But next is Jess.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna keep this really, really short and simple. I appreciate all that you do as the Board of Finance, and I'd also like to thank and say how much I appreciate the work of the Board of Education. I am not an education, a transportation, or any of those type of experts. Dr. Lettsie and his team are. I fully support the full funding of his budget because they are the people who are equipped to decide what the needs of our children are in the education setting. So I hope that you're able to review this and fully support and approve his budget. Thank you.
The last speaker I see is Ryan. Ryan, did you want to say something? Please give us your full name.
Hi, yeah, good evening. This is Ryan Lee of Fort Berchwood Avenue. I'm here to support the passing of the BOE budget in full. We're a family of five who have been residing in New Canaan for seven years. I have one high school senior, one high school sophomore, and one preschooler about to go to kindergarten in four. But Dr. Lettsie and the Board of Education have done a fantastic job this year in following the advice of medical experts through the pandemic, keeping our children in school as much as possible. And I would urge that we continue to follow medical advice and pass a budget that includes funding for healthy start times. Having watched my two older children struggle with early starts in seventh grade, that do worry about what the future holds for my preschooler, who is diagnosed with autism and will struggle to adapt to those early start times at that stage of his development. I'd also like to say something about my oldest son, who is currently the high school sophomore. He's undergone a dramatic body clock change over the past few years. We've seen an early bird turn into a night owl, and none of this by design. We've always maintained good evening and nighttime habits, but no matter what we try, he's never ready for sleep at the time he needs to be for an early start the next day. So I've got both sides of the spectrum. I understand why people would object to their younger children having early start times, but I can see what happens to them over the course of time. So just like last year, I'm here again, asking for the BOE's full budget to be passed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has not spoken yet that would like to speak? Just gonna scan the three pages.
See Heather Moore's hand up. I'm not sure if.
She spoke before, so I'm just.
I just want to make sure.
I did speak. Bar. Sorry, Bar Rucci is trying to get on to speak, but she doesn't have the.
Sorry, Bar Rucci is trying to get on to speak, but she doesn't have the um, raise her hand option on her computer.
Hey Barb, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Sorry about that. Um, I'm Bar Rucci. My husband David and I live at 697 Valley Road with our three children. Thank you for volunteering your time to the town. I am here tonight to express my full support of the BOE budget, including funds for healthier start times. I can't imagine anyone expressing anything but their deepest gratitude to Dr. Lutz for navigating this very difficult year with so much careful thought and consideration for all students. When most of the country is talking about getting kids back in school, our superintendent has kept grades K through eight in school for most of the year. Our elementary students have been in person full-time since September 28th, which is remarkable and impressive. So many young families have not had to repeat the hardships of last spring. Our public schools are the backbone of our community. Now is not the time to cut their budget. Now is the time to invest in them. Dr. Lutz and the BOE have shown extraordinary competence throughout this very challenging year and have proven that they have the very best interests of all students at heart. I trust them to make the right decisions for my children and for students of every age. I hope you do too. I urge you to pass this budget and let the superintendent and Board of Ed decide what's best for the health and wellness of all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do not see anybody else. I would remind the board that you have been receiving letters and you continue to receive emails, so you can read those. But I think unless I see anybody else, I think we are done, Todd, with the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Look, thanks for all your comments. Um, as you know, as you know, I think the Board of Finance already completely supports our great school systems. And as you, obviously, we have for over 20 years. Um, that's why it's a leading district. It takes time and the team has built amazing product, frankly. Uh, and I'm glad you all agree with us. Um, we do want to retain our great schools. It's a, it's a, it's a top priority again, for sure. Uh, we were pleased to support that special appropriation, uh, to keep our students and teachers safe and to keep the schools open. So, um, so we agree uh, fully. And as I said before, we do expect we'll approve, um, you know, the, the Board of Ed's budget um, request for expenses and capital with the exception of the two future special appropriations that we're just gonna defer at this point. So um, that we did all that and obviously we're trying to keep taxes, but again, as you have raised. Uh, with that, I think we will close out the uh, public hearing comments. Um, and we're gonna move into our regular meeting. Your people can, are free to stay on, of course, um, but we'll move right into our uh, next item on the agenda. Thank you all again for your time tonight and all of the things that you're doing within town as well. Thank you. Okay.
Item five.
Bucker will move on to you. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Very pleased to have Nancy join us. Nancy, I saw you somewhere on that group of 72 people.
I am here.
There you are. There you are. I got you. Well, thank you. I'm so glad you could come tonight and um, sorry that didn't work out scheduling wise on Tuesday night. I think that was our mistake and error in some way, night course, but um, we'd love to see your presentation.
All right. Well, um, I am treasurer of New Canaan EMS. Also on the call, we have Bonnie Rumely, who is captain. And I believe we have Barb Clayton. I don't see her on my screen, but Barb is president. So we understood them. It's a very simple budget. We understood there might be questions and uh, I'm on the finance side of it. Um, Bonnie is on the uh, operational side of it with the calls, statistics related to that and issues with COVID. And Barb is on the membership side, the whole um, organization, including um, you know, the house itself and how we maintain our, our operation 24 by 7. So if you'd like me to go over the numbers, uh, they're pretty small. I'll do that now.
Sure.
Okay. Very good.
Did you want to present something or?
No, no.
Okay, just gonna walk through it. That's.
It's just, it's, it's like five numbers to talk about. So the very largest number in our budget for the um, 2122 year is for our paramedic contract. So we are EMTs. The paramedic is the higher licensed um, person. We have a contract with Norwalk Hospital to supply a paramedic 24 by 7. It's a five-year fixed fee contract. We're still in the middle of that, so there is no increase from last year. About 400,000. Um, the next item that would carry some significance in numbers is our dispatching number and the support for a Connecticut required accounting of ambulance transport activity. Um, it's required by the state. We are covered under a southwest regional area. We also use that same service or agency to do our dispatching. While 911 goes to the police department, if it is a medical call, it is transferred to C-Med. And they are our dispatchers. That is a, a contract for the year and they have a very, it's a nonprofit. They have a very small incremental increase each year. So we know what it is and that's listed. The next uh, item on our budget is one that we put forward to you. It's within our control. Over the years, we've been trying to drop it. We've understood that there has been requirements or requests at least to keep the budgets flat, or if you can decrease them by two, three percent, please do so. We have done that over the years. And this year, it, it was a little bit of a struggle, certainly with all the requirements for COVID. Um, this contribution line item is what the town gives us to run our operation um, in mostly covering ambulance repairs and ambulance supplies or medical supplies. When we did discuss this with the Board of Selectmen, they were a little, um, they were, they were concerned we weren't asking for enough, knowing that the expenses had gone up this current year and certainly might go into our next fiscal year. Um, and gave us a 2% increase over what we requested. So that number's about 63,000 now. That is a number that we manage. We get a check each month from the town to pay our own bills and we have lots. So very um, a, all the different vendors that provide us the services for the ambulances, for the supplies, the medical supplies. So it's a little easier for us to pay all those bills than to ask the town to manage that. Everything else on the spreadsheet for our budget for this next fiscal year is something we don't really control. It's what the town departments allocate to us, whether it be IT or um, gasoline, electricity, water, uh, anything like that. And that's our budget. That's our, our operating budget through the town.
But Nancy, a quick question. Do, do you have enough? That's always the question we have for you. Is that, is that enough that you, the segment added more, but the, in their process, but we're asking?
Right. So we, we want to be good citizens and we do accept and expect contributions, contributions from the um, the private sector. And we have been doing that every year. We do a little fundraising and we get a lot of generous people in town who provide us funds that cover everything else. So we are able to get through each fiscal year. Um, the things we might buy include replacements for broken equipment, um, things we might not anticipate, that there is a new type of uh, suction device that we might want to get or a new type of gurney. Um, if we don't anticipate these and they're not part of our budget, we do use some of our uh, contributions to cover that.
Yep, okay. And let me just, one quick thing before I turn it over to the board and, or if you want to walk through the other items. I just want to make sure everybody else who has stayed on, you're more than welcome to stay on, but we're not voting on anything tonight. Um, just so you know, we're going through all of our analysis tonight, finishing up with EMS, and then we've got our, our budget review and capital review and our vote isn't until Thursday night. Just, just to make sure if you're hanging on for any kind of vote, um, that won't, that won't be happening tonight. And sorry, Nancy.
So, so that's the operating, that's the general fund. The only other item on the capital side for the next fiscal year is a request for 65,000 to get a new SUV that we use as the paramedics vehicle. It has a few purposes, but it's primarily the vehicle they go to the scene of an incident versus being in our ambulance. And typically, we keep them for about six years in that position. Then we rotate that vehicle to a backup position and it's used for a number of things also, um, for another six years or more.
Okay. Do you want to go through the statistics? Um, just how's the year shaping up in terms of calls and how did it compare more or less? Yeah.
Very good. So Bonnie, if you want to give them any information on stats.
Sure, I can speak to that, Todd, and I, I want to extend our thanks from EMS for all of the support from all of you and the town. As you can imagine, it's been difficult for all, but um, you know, we have worked very hard and, and we have felt your support along the way. So I really want to thank you for that.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome. Um, in terms of the operations, just to walk you through some of the call numbers, um, if we look at a 2019 to 2020 comparison, uh, we had in 2019, we had 1,612 calls. In 2020, it went down to 1441. Uh, there was a period of time there because of the pandemic where people were scared to call or they were sitting on some of their medical issues. Um, unfortunately, so I think that accounts for some of the decrease that we saw just year over year with the total number of calls. Um, if we looked at backup calls, a backup call is when the primary crew is out on a primary call and another call comes in at the same town, excuse me, at the same time in town. Um, so in 2019, we had 188 backup calls. And 2020, we had 167. Um, we have three ambulances, so technically we can also staff a third call if that happens. Luckily, it's fairly infrequently. In 2019, we had eight third calls in town and it was the same for 2020. Uh, but we're very fortunate to be able to staff all of those with our volunteers and, and very successfully do so. Um, and the last stat that I would share of note is we had, since the beginning of the pandemic, 50 total patients confirmed with COVID um, that we either transported or were at their home due to COVID-related symptoms.
Did you say 50? 5-0?
5-0.
Yeah, okay.
That's all I have. Thank you, Todd.
Any questions um, from the board? Yeah, George, go ahead. You're on mute though, George.
I, I really don't have a question. I just wanted to express my, my appreciation uh, for the, just the huge amount of hours just for training and staying uh, current and following all the protocols that EMS provides for the town is really quite amazing and, and very much appreciated.
Thank you, George. Um, I can tell you it's a true passion and labor of love for all of us. It, it's our pleasure, really.
Michael Chen, you're on mute as well. I want a dollar for every time I say.
I, I, I was just clapping my hands to what George says and I wasn't raising my hand. I just, uh, I second everything George says. Thank you for everything you do, Bonnie, your team.
Thank you for your support.
Any other questions? I see, uh, Maria, yeah, also on mute.
Just, just one quick question. Have you seen any drop off in your donations this year because, you know, uh, of COVID and not being able to fundraise maybe as you might have in the past?
No, it, it actually has been um, on par. And what's also interesting is part of that, uh, i- in the dollar amounts, people have offered specific things. Like they say, what do you need during this COVID period? And it's like, well, we need some special disinfecting stuff and we'll give them some information. And so they will give us um, uh, an amount that is specific to a certain piece of equipment.
I think I might add something too, if I have just one minute. It's Barb Clayton uh, speaking. Uh, just to add a little bit of um, perspective to what Bonnie and Nancy have just added. Um, and I do, I do know that I heard Todd actually ask what more money we need, and I don't know that coming from the Board of Finance Director, I thought that's, you know, that's something that uh, I will remember. But um, to give a little bit of um, perspective to the, to what the service provides, we have uh, 24/7, uh, 365 days of the year coverage for the town, and that's covered by about 40 trained people. So if you think about the commitment of writing 60 hours a month of volunteer time, it's really, uh, uh, I mean, we're so proud of the service that we do, but it does take about a year to uh, do all of the training and do all of the testing and certification. And then we're all constantly uh, retraining on our, what our procedures are. So um, it is, as Bonnie said, a labor of love, but it is also a, a real passion for the people involved. And when 9/11 happened, it, it really brought people physically together. And as you can imagine, in a pandemic, it uh, there was a certain amount of fear in what we do. But it also has, we've increased our numbers of um, of active members from 29 a couple of years ago to 40, and then we should be at 46 by the time that people come back in the, the next couple of months from leaves of absence. So it, um, it's a, it's a lot of work, heavy lift, but it's being done by a, a pretty small number of people and not all those people actually live in New Canaan. So even more um, reason to celebrate what the EMS does.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thanks for noticing. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Barb. Okay. It's a great job. Thanks. Thanks, Bonnie.
All right. Thank you for having the three of us.
You bet. Thank you.
All righty.
Okay, on to, let's see, Linda.
Yeah, so um, at the last meeting, you wanted to get um, an update on COVID reimbursement, so I'm gonna share my screen here. Uh, you do have this document um, on your tablet. Can you see that?
You can.
Yes.
All right. Everything's working so far. So what I did here was I put together, um, and I did coordinate and think I see uh, Joanne and Tracy on the Board of Ed are on the call as well. We kind of worked together to gather as much information as we could to present a holistic picture of where we are between the town and the Board of Ed and the different pots of money, what's been spent, what's been reimbursed and, and what's outstanding.
To leave the meeting.
And we also have an update. And we also have an update um, on the American Rescue Plan that, that was recently passed. So essentially, we started, I mean, current COVID expenses in fiscal year 20 with the pandemic. Um, we're still incurring those expenses um, in fiscal year 21. So I'll just kind of walk through the top part of the sheet, which are the Board of Ed expenses and then the town expenses. And then I'll also talk about, there are some storm expenses that occurred during the summer that we're also getting reimbursed for, and I think it's important to discuss those as well. So the first two buckets on, on the Board of Ed, you recall that at the beginning, at the end of last year, the beginning of the fiscal year, you approved two special appropriations for the Board of Ed, which totaled approximately 1.9 million dollars, which are these two pots of money here. The 1.6 billion plus the 250 total of that, that 1.9. Um, of that 1.9, uh, the Board of Ed was able to qualify uh, $250,000 worth of expenses for reimbursement. Uh, because of how the, the grants are structured, uh, in order for those, for that, for that expense to be reimbursed, it needed to be um, expensed out of the grant account. And therefore, then the 1.9 million was spent out of the, of the 250. So that's why you see those separated. Um, and so that was reimbursed. So of that original 1.9 million that was approved as best application, 1.6 million has not yet been uh, reimbursed, but the expense has been incurred. You recall that last year, uh, the Board of Ed also incurred some expenses within, within the general fund. And last year, we were at 199,000, which we submitted together with the town expenses with the CARES Act, through the Office of um, OPM, uh, Office of Management. And of that, we did receive back of this 199 in fiscal year 20 expenses, we did receive back a total of 128,000 plus this 233,000, roughly 301,000 in total as reimbursement uh, through the state. Because those were general fund expenses on the, on the Board of Ed side, these funds were basically uh, posted on the town general fund side and basically replenished, replenished the fund balance. And so that's what um, that's what those are. Year to date, uh, the Board of Ed has about 560,000 of additional expenses. And uh, we're still working on those uh, through FEMA uh, for additional, additional reimbursements. Uh, the Board of Ed has also had some additional expenses related to testing that we charged through the uh, The Board of Ed has also had some additional expenses related to testing that we charged through the Health and Internal Service Fund. There's some senior groceries and some meals and wheels expenses that were charged. Some of the meals and wheels expenses have been reimbursed. And so you see the 17,000 expense, 17,000 reimbursement as the outstanding amount is zero. On the town side, we did expense 300,000, 300,000 last fiscal year. Year to date, we spent 320,000 in COVID expenses in the general fund. So far, we've only received the 233 that I mentioned earlier that is part of the FY20 expenses and therefore on the general fund side for the town, we have about 390,000 of unreimbursed COVID expenses so far. Like the Board of Ed, we are also charging testing on the Internal Service Fund for employees and some for community testing. And therefore, we have about $48,000 of unreimbursed testing related expenses. And likewise, we have some minor funds. The Health Department has received the grant through the state. And so they've spent some and we're applying to receive those reimbursements through the state. So all in all combined, between, between the Board of Ed and the town, year to date, we've incurred about $3.5 million of expenses. We've gotten about 630. We refunded or reimbursed, but we do have about $2.9 million of COVID expenses incurred that haven't yet been reimbursed. We have heard some good news on the America Rescue Plan that was recently passed. The state informs us that they're going to distribute that. The state of Connecticut is going to get about 4.2 billion dollars of that. They're going to use a formula for distribution for towns under 50,000. It's going to be managed by the state. Towns above cities, above 50,000, they're going to be get, they're going to get that directly through the federal government. Based on the CBPG formula, which is a combination of population and asset value and so forth, the town of New Canaan is on the list. I believe they've identified about $1.9 million. Now, we are still waiting for this to pass through the Senate, but if it, if existing legislation passes as is, there is potentially $1.9 million for the municipality in addition to some additional funds on the education side and grants, the ESO grant that the Board of Ed has already received, there's some additional funding there. And there is additional funding this year. I believe they said there's about 440,000 that's already been approved, that's headed our way. This was published, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. We haven't yet received that, that those are some additional funds that are in their way. So we're still waiting. The rules, as we've had discussions before, they change. Items are sometimes ineligible, then they're not, then they are. The big issue right now are costs related to reopening. As you know, our Board of Ed was very proactive in getting things together so that schools could reopen, as you heard in some of the citizen comments earlier. Initially, we were told that some of the reopening expenses, because they were incurred prior to January of 2020, they may not be eligible for reimbursement. And therefore, we were in essence getting penalized for being proactive. Under the current legislation, we're finding out, and it's not even legislation, it's more administrative decision making, that there is a possibility that we can go back to January and most of our reopening expenses could also be, could also be reimbursed. So that's kind of where we are. So we're still waiting to see. But of this 2.9, we're hopeful that a significant chunk of that may indeed come back to the town. As you know, these are funds that we've incurred using our reserves and therefore any reimbursement replenishes these reserves so that we don't have to dip in them permanently.
That's a great update. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a terrific update. Look, before you go down to the storm. And what's the accounting for that? First of all, you've, you've not accounted for anything coming back, correct, in the current budget pro forma?
No, we have not budgeted for any, any of these reimbursements moving forward.
Okay, so that would be, and then the, the accounting for that would be, it came from the fund, it goes back to the fund. We could, we could dispense it from there, I suppose, if we wanted to, but that, that's the way that it works.
Right. So if we got anything, anything back, it would basically be, it would be additional info into the fund balance, which can be appropriated for future appropriations, as we discussed, that could be coming up this fiscal, next fiscal year.
Thanks, Linda.
Sure. And then during the summer, we did incur some storm expenses related to the storms. Initially, it was not clear that was going to be declared a disaster and so we weren't sure if we were going to get reimbursed. We were proactive by tracking those expenses in anticipation that they possibly could. And so we found out that they indeed could be reimbursed at 100%. And so right now, we're working with FEMA to get about 470,000, which includes supplies, materials, overtime, mostly where we had to incur some additional tree, tree service contracts just to clear the streets and to create that sense of safety as people walking around and moving around town. And so we do have about almost under half a million dollars in expenses that we anticipate will also be coming back to the town. Bill was on call with FEMA today. We haven't yet, they're right now assigning caseworkers. Each community gets a caseworker. We don't have ours yet assigned, but once we do, that will be our point person. But we have started to gather all the necessary, we have the forms and the materials and the receipts and the invoices to get reimbursed. And therefore, if you combine all of those, the COVID plus the storm expenses on the, between the town and the Board of Ed, we have almost three and a half million dollars of expenses that have incurred waiting to be reimbursed and we're hopeful that we could get a big chunk of that back.
Stop. Well, I just can't see if anybody has their hand up. Are there any comments?
Sure, I'm going to stop sharing.
It's like Amy does.
We have a big crowd. Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, Linda, just to drill down on the timing again. So right now you have about 600,000 in hand and you expect to get conservatively just from the FEMA, say another 400,000, so like plus or minus a million. And that's ignoring what might come if the Senate passes a different additional relief bill, right? Do I have that right? So you're putting in on the FEMA and then the 600. Is that correct?
Correct.
So is, is any of that reflected in our fund balances right now? Like, is this the 600 already in?
The.
I'm just going.
Because part of the, part of the 300, this is revenue we received this fiscal year. So yes, when I do my quarter, my monthly reports, you recall that one I did for the January report does show the 300,000 COVID reimbursement and therefore that is adding to this year's ending balance.
Okay. All right. But, but any idea on the timing for the potential FEMA reimbursement?
No, I know we saw, and I think the Board of Ed can speak to the 400,000 that was published that's coming our way. That's the, I believe most of that will be applied towards, on the grant side. But I don't have a sense of timing, no.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Judy. You're on mute. You're on mute, Judy.
I did. Okay. Linda, the update from last week was a bit different. What has changed that assures us or hopefully guarantees this of this 400,000 from FEMA? Did we redo our numbers? Did we resubmit? Did Tom O'Day get involved? What, what is the pendulum here that has swung?
No, the, the 400, that is, that was the ESO, the ESO grant, and I believe Board of Ed can correct me on this. We already knew that. I mean, that's not necessarily reimbursement on the town side. And there was, there was a list of allocations that was published. And the only thing that has changed since, there's two things that have changed is the passage of the America Rescue Plan that does include additional funding for municipalities that we did not know the last time we had this discussion. And then the also changing of the rules of reimbursement, because prior, prior to three weeks ago, we had a majority of our reopening expenses were deemed as ineligible. And now it appears that they may be eligible for reimbursement. So those are the two significant changes since we last had discussions on this issue.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, I would say, you know, look, we don't know what's going to happen still. So I would be, we do, I think we should be cautious as it relates to planning on any of this until we have some more specifics coming down the road, but seems like at least it's possible we'll benefit from some. Any other questions on the board? Tucker, you see anybody's hands up? No? Okay, okay. If not, thanks, Linda. Good update. Let's keep us, keep it posted. We'll look at, we'll look forward to this at our next meeting too. Okay. And keep us posted as things evolve. Okay, over to the budget overview. So do you want to start with giving everyone, we'll go through the two page of the expenses and the revenues and just give us a status of where we are. So I have to go through capital, but let's make sure we understand the, the revenues and expenses.
Sure, I'm going to show my screen again. You're seeing this?
Okay. Yes, yes.
Okay, so what, what we have here is, we have on, on the far right, two columns is kind of where we started with the process, the Board of Selectmen approved budget with the corresponding fund balance. And then since then, there have been a number of discussions. Obviously, you've met with, with departments and we've made some adjustments and additions. We've had discussions about, on the Board of Ed side, about some future COVID related expenses and how we, we think that we're going to fund those. And so what I did here was basically compile a summary of the discussions that have taken place today to kind of show where things, where things stand as of today. I did also provide you a, a sheet that has line item changes between the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, which adds up to this summary, to this summary sheet. And so on this sheet, the biggest change is obviously, just looking at the revenue, based on the ins and outs, we've made some adjustments to the fund down, drawdown, going from 6.8 million to 5.6 million. And a big reason for being able to do that is there were some on the budget that was approved for the Board of Ed, there were some COVID numbers there, which if you pull out in order to fund variable special appropriation, it does significantly reduce the Board of Ed budget just by not funding those COVID expense items right now, as we did last year. And therefore, in order to make that adjustment, you know, so you have the revenue, the expenses going down, you need less revenue to make up for that. And therefore, we kind of split the difference between drawing down on the fund balance, but then at the same time, also reducing the amount required to be raised, raised from taxation. And therefore, what that does on those two numbers, you'll see that the budget that came to you from the Board of Selectmen that had everything in it had us at a mil rate of about 18.4, which was a 1.4% increase. But it also had amount to be raised from taxation at 142.2 million, which would have been a 2.3% increase. Based on these adjustments that I just discussed and which you have detailed information on, the amount to be raised from taxation in order to balance the budget as is now would be 139.8, which is a 0.6% increase from the current budget as opposed to the 2.3. The mil rate, and again, this is still a number in progress, assuming that we keep the fund balance drawdown at 5.6, assuming a 98.5% collection rate, the budget currently sits at about 18.1 million, 18.1 million. 18.1 mil rate, which is a slight decrease from the current mil rate of 18.164. So you have a small decrease in the mil rate, a slight increase in the amount to be raised from taxation and, and with a $5.6 million use of fund balance. So that's how things look on, on the revenue side. And then the second page of the summary.
Linda, what, if you are, with this proposed drawdown on the fund balance, where do we end with our fund? I mean, so where, what, what number are you targeting for savings gap, whatever you want to call it?
So I'm, I'm going to go up on this sheet where I have the FY22 revised. Our current budget as is, you initially approved a budget that had a four and a half billion dollar drawdown. And then we did the 1.5 special appropriation for the Board of Ed, which was to be paid from the fund down. So that brought that initial fund balance estimation at about 6 million. In looking at where the budget is now and our year-to-date expenses, looking at our historical revenues, I don't anticipate that we will draw down $6 million by the end of the fiscal year. Worst case scenario, we'll probably draw down maybe a million and a half, maybe even less than that. So assuming with a projection of a million and a half drawdown, we will potentially end the year with about $33.3 million total fund balance in the general fund, which is a million and a half less than the 34.8 that we ended with last year. And therefore, if you move that number forward as the beginning balance for the fiscal year budget that we're working on, this drawdown and the current budget as is would get us to about a $27.7 million fund balance in the next year. And again, that is assuming that we spend 100% of what's budgeted to be spent and we bring in 100% of what we budget to bring in. In actuality, we typically spend a little less than what we budget and because of the collection rate and other things, we could potentially bring in a little bit more than what we budget. But with a flat budget assumption and the projection of the fund balance this year, we're looking at about a $27, $27 million next year. This, however, doesn't take into account, we said that the Board of Ed can come back next year for a special appropriation for the COVID and therefore, that's what, that's the resources that we would have available to fund those additional COVID expenses once the fiscal year begins.
Yeah, and that's not assuming any of the potential reimbursements for FEMA or anything else.
Correct.
Right. So on the one hand, we're holding back with, we anticipate some additional COVID expense from the Board of Ed under. We don't know exactly how much, but we're, we're transferring as much over. And we're going to hold that back. And in the last year transfer, which shows the $6 million transfer, but part of that was because the Board of Ed's came in $2 million under.
Correct.
More of a timing than anything else. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Linda, it's Tom. Can you just maybe remind the board here? So if we're going to end assuming the contribution of the 5.6 that you posited in your last column here, and we end up at a, call it $28 million unassigned fund balance, that, that appears to be, you know, 19, 20-ish percent of a $147 million budget. Could you just remind us what the guidance is from the relevant credit rating agencies on what we have to have to maintain our AAA rating? And then how much cushion above that, that 27 million might represent?
Tom, it's an 18% of a $154 million budget. So it's 18%.
Right. It's 18 of a 150. Got it. Okay.
So the, I, I believe the board, the board in the past has, I don't know if it was a policy, but it's more of with the board itself with the finance, that said at minimum 10% of the general fund balance year to year. The Government Finance Office Association sets it at 6.6%, which is roughly three months' worth of, of expenses and therefore, you know, with the 26. And it's based on the assigned fund balance, the unassigned fund balance, the 26.6, not the 27.9. And therefore, at the 26.6, right, so you'd be looking at about a 16, 17% ending balance, assuming that you spend a full $154.4 million in that fiscal year.
Yeah, I work with these rating agencies daily. And when they, when they look at how they evaluate your credit rating, there's a whole hierarchy. And when they, when they look at how they evaluate your credit rating, there's a whole hierarchy. And the whole debt profile is only a, a small percentage of it. A lot of our rating is to do with our relative wealth levels and our ability to tax and to raise. So, you know, but what I do see often with, across the country with AAA-rated towns like ours, it's not unusual to see them have at least 15% fund balance, which is way above minimum, but it's, it's not an unusual thing to see them at that level. And it's been, and everyone who's had that has had huge luxury during COVID to be able to react proactively.
I think this balance puts us squarely right where we want to be. Plus, we know we've probably got a little extra revenue coming in. And we might have a little extra from the walkthrough you just went through on COVID. And we might also spend a little bit of money with some special appropriations for the Board of Ed for COVID. So we'll probably net out right around the 28, 29 million, which is right in the strike zone, I think, of where we want to be. Just to. So just, we'll keep going down. That, that leaves us with everything else improved. I mean, the Board of Ed operating, other than, again, the special appropriations is completely approved here. All the other requests, we left the 98.5 in there, I believe.
Yes, we left the 98.5%. And then I believe on the Board of Ed, there, the operating budget is kept whole as, as is. The only adjustments were the, the, I believe there was the 900,000 or so for COVID that will, will get addressed. And then the 1.1, 1.2 million dollars on the internal service, also related to the COVID expenses. And therefore, we made a corresponding adjustments on the Board of Ed transferring to that fund, netting out that 1.1. And then I know there's discussion about the funding for the corridor. And so that adjustment has been made in this initial budget.
If you go back to that second column, you see, it's fine.
Second column of revenues or of expenses?
Yeah, with revenues, the one that's for basically fiscal year 18, 19. And just look at the bottom of the screen, it says 140 million. That was what was raised by taxation that year, 140. The next year was 139, then 138, 9, 1, and that's kind of where we were. And this is 139, 8. So you can see for now, four years, we've been right in that zone of about 138 to 140 million dollars. So when I say that the amount raised by taxation's been flat, this would be the fourth year. That's what I'm referring to right there. So I know you all know that, but just, there it is on the screen, which is helpful. What else? Do you want to, any, you want to cover on this page? Or you want to go through the expenditures?
Um, no, I think we can go through, through the expenditures. And again, the summary sheet that, that you have details, the line by line. Changes, we've discussed the, the changes on the, on the Board of Ed side, just looking at the Board of Finance and the Board of, between the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. That is a big driver, obviously, the changes on the Board of Ed that's driving the budget. You did have some increases, like we talked about with, I believe we added some money to emergency management. There was some additional staffing in, in Public Works and so forth. And all of that totals to a total spend of 154.4 million dollars, which is 0.5% increase over the current year revised compared to the 157.6 million that was approved by the Board of Selectmen, which included the full Board of Ed budget as presented to them at the time, since they, they don't have the authority to act on that. So that's the big driver, but that's kind of where we sit at on, on the expense side.
Can Linda or Todd, whoever, the, the Board of Ed liaisons, just, I just want to make sure in the approach that we're taking with the group insurance for the Board of Ed, that we 100% understand, you know, that they're on board, we're on board, and it works for everybody on that, that there isn't any feeling. So if, if I'm looking at the, the one line eliminating their quarter, we used to, we used to be 60, 40, we went to 40, 60. So that's savings account, basically, so that we have the cushion. We're just going to keep it all in one spot for Board of Ed and the rest of the insurance that New Canaan provides. It's not a co-mingling of, of any of the insurance programs. It's just our funds, rather than have savings accounts in a bunch of places, we're going to have them in one place. Do I have that right?
Linda can explain it better. It doesn't change any healthcare, Anthem or Cigna, doesn't change anything. The premiums. Interesting in this analysis, we found that we've been spending a million a month on the, for the Board of Ed for five years on average. It's been, it's unbelievable. Spiked up a little, goes down a little, but it's about a million a month, very, very, I know it seems surprising, but what, very consistent. But no, there's no changing of any of the plans or anything like that. Linda, you can explain the, I'll call it the accounting for it. There's a reason that may want to, I forgot what you called it. You assigned some amount to some one group or the other, but it is as you described it, basically.
Right. And so the, the biggest change here that the guidance, budget guidance committee made as far as the, it's, it's, it's really, it breaks down to the corridor. Whereas in the past, you know, we started off with a 40, 60% corridor. And as part of the calculation for the Board of Ed Internal Service Fund, they appropriately budgeted to be able to have that fund within the fund for the 40%, and we did the same for the 60%.
Right.
Under this scenario is if we move forward and do away with the 60, 40, and 100% of that corridor is indeed on the town side, then the Board of Ed doesn't need, they don't need to, to save in that fund for the 40%, just like now they don't fund for the 60%, we fund for the full amount. Now, those are the discussions that the Board of, the Board of Finance members have had. But I do believe that there's ongoing discussion, Todd, that maybe I'm, I think I'm summarizing that correctly between the, the group and, and the resource committee or other members of the Board of Ed, where this is. This is the current proposal, but that's kind of where it sits today.
I just want to make sure everybody understands how it works. It's pretty straightforward. As it relates to our discussions, I think we raised this when the Board of Ed presented in our public meeting. I laid it out, as you've all been copied out, when we outlined the plan a couple of weeks ago. I followed up a week ago, and I have not, I've not gotten any feedback. I, I did receive today feedback from Katrina that they still want to have a discussion about how this would work. So, so that's all I can tell you. So that's, it's really not, not any feedback, other than today, I got feedback that they'd like to continue to have a discussion.
So, so the potential savings is that, I just want to make sure I get this right. I know we've been going around with it, and you all have spent more time with it, so I apologize. So the, the premise is that with the current structure, we have the 46 with the Board of Ed, that we're overfunding the reserve. Is that what it is? Is that where the saving is? That in the way we're doing it, they're being conservative, they're putting aside more than they need to. And if we bring it on the town side, because we do have a good balance sheet, we, it's, so it's, it's more of a one-time savings in terms of we've, we're over. I know we have, we have a way of being conservative and on overfunding reserves, which is a great thing, but sometimes it gets silly. So is, is that the main driver?
I think that's the main driver, I would say.
And, and it won't, from, from people sitting in different situations in terms of where they get their health insurance, it doesn't policies, it's, it's just the reserves. Is that correct?
That's it.
Correct. Okay. And, and the line above that, the, so eliminating the quarters just coming to us. And so we have our general fund balance, and part of the general fund balance will be allocated to our health savings reserves. The, the line of the 1.1 million reduction in BOE health expense due to COVID.
What document are you looking at?
Are we? Looking at your revenues or your expenditures on page one, page one.
Oh, page one, okay.
Yeah, of your.
Okay, this is what you're looking at. Okay.
Just the changes. So number one, the first line is basically, we don't know what COVID expenses are. We're going to try to do it on a current basis as it comes in. The group insurance reduced projected health expense due to COVID, COVID. Board of Selectmen approved 1.1 million. We're taking that out. Just.
Right, so the, the first two, the first two numbers are the, the COVID-related expenses. There's, there are COVID-related expenses on the operating budget, and there are also COVID-related expenses on the board, on the, on the health side. And what the, what the guidance team basically said is, we will deal with those as they occur. So we should not budget for those now. So when those, when those expenses materialize, we'll come back for special appropriation and we will do that 1.1, whatever that number ends up being, we will fund it at that point. And therefore, initially, the same way we're.
Extraordinary expenses.
Yeah.
Not that sure what they're going to be, could total, what is it, 2.1 million total, but we don't know.
We don't know. We also don't know what Linda just went through. We have no idea if we're going to actually get reimbursed. So let's just let all that play out over some period of time. We will pay for whatever they are, but whatever they are, we'll do in a special appropriation.
Okay, fine. I was just trying to get the different pieces there. And this, the second one is just, let's put all our reserves in one spot and we'll do all the reserving for the Board of Ed on their health quarter. Correct?
The town, for both, the town and for the.
The 60, 40, we do it all. Okay, thank you.
Now, Linda, I do have a question. On the same page, page one, on the revenues, a little further down, the fund balance number is 4.9 million, which I believe is the result of still having in the budget a recapture of the parking fees? That, that, is that the most, that's not our current proposal, is it?
No, because this, this changed. So right now, we're at, we're at 5.6. So you're right. The, this was, we were at 4.9 when we were going to move the parking, yeah, the 700,000. And then we said, we're not going to do the parking, we're going to leave that. And that number went from 6.8 to 5.6.
Catch everybody up on what we just said. So there's a parking fund that's been created for parking-related costs, paving and so forth. At one point, we thought, given that it's got a balance of about a million dollars, we might be able through cash management to reuse some of those, you know, those monies for operating expenses. We went through and found out it's an enterprise fund, that's not really an opportunity. However, it is a fund we, I think this is a question you asked, Amy. It is a fund we can use for paving and for capital, so let's use it. Why not? Let's not bond for it. Let's use that fund for parking-related expenses, and we will do that in this budget. But not 700, it'll be 300 for the, I think, for the paving.
Yes, it's 300,000.
So the number, just one more thing, the number of the tax collection on this page is approximately the same as, what, what's it suggested, right? I mean, it just looks like this is, this page is, it didn't get updated.
The, yeah, the fund balance drawdown, that was that last minute change that from, that we weren't going to use any parking revenue. And therefore, the fund balance, instead of being 4.9 million, will be 5.6 million. That, that is the number that changes.
Okay, so 4.1, okay, 4.9 becomes 5.6.
It's on page two. I mean, that's, that's, that's really, you know, you can update this page with that change and maybe.
Yeah, that goes, just to be clear, that goes to 5.6, right, Linda? But the line above it of the 700,000 goes to zero. So if you add the two, it's the same thing. It's five.
It's the same thing, yeah. So the 700,000 goes away, and then the 4.9 becomes 5.6. The total, the total number, the total stays the same.
Yeah.
And, and the over, the, the contract services for the town clerk, I think, also went out.
So let me, okay, so there's two items, if you want to talk about those while we're on this page, there are a couple of items on this page. So on.
Just go right through.
So where's that line item for the, for the?
For the town clerk.
That's the, that's the last one.
Okay, if you guys remember, when Claudia came to present, there was $31,000 in her budget for redacting files and items that would be going online for public records, and that was the cost of redacting private information. At that point, we said, hang on a minute, why would we put these things online? That, we're not sure we understand that. If they were to go online, I think we could all agree, we'd want to fund them being, things being redacted. But do we need to have these records online? And is this just because of COVID? If everyone's vaccinated, do we need to really race to have things online? Can we just keep things remote and manual and so forth and so on? So after speaking with Claudia, what, what I think makes sense is to agree to put the 31,000 for the redaction back in the budget request, but leave it in the hands of the selectmen, the three selectmen, to determine how to proceed on whether or not they're going to put things online or not. And if so, the money's there for redacting. So that was the proposal to bring to you guys. That's two for you. That's one. Want to debate that or discuss?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Just a way to hedge it and just have the money there to protect it if we need it. And if we don't, we don't.
So, so the number itself is, is this number here. So you'll see that the Board of Selectmen approved 46.8, and under the Board of Finance, we've, we've, we've put that back in. So it's at 46.8, at the same funding level. Initially, we took it out and then it's, it's back in.
With the net, if it's 31.8, because we agreed to 15. And then the other item, to go back up, is that anyone question on that one? I didn't realize my camera's off. No, no questions on that?
So we're keeping, so we're keeping it in, then. If you go back there.
Keeping it in, leaving it up to the, to the three selectmen to determine how to proceed with, with managing the documents in Town Hall.
Okay.
Now, I got to take your attention to, it says the first selectman's salary. So that's a position, not a person. We, we are, we are supposed to review this every two years during the election year, and we, and we with two years ago. And so we did not review it and we did not change it two years ago. The reason to do it in the election year is it's, it's not, then it's truly not a personal item. It's for the position. The actual salary takes place as paraded and is effective in November after the election. And so we were, we kind of whiffed it two years ago. We are putting in an extra, I guess it's, is it $5,000 total or?
Yes, it's, it's paraded beginning of November.
Total seven, I think.
Yeah.
Seven or eight.
5,300 for the salary, 400 for the.
So that's an item that I, you know, that I spoke with HR about, our government liaison team also supports doing this. And like I said, we probably should have done all, half this amount two years ago. So this is what it is. That's what that is, if you're asking what that, why not?
So what, where, how, how do you get to that number?
By the way, sorry. Good question. I'll answer in a sec. We actually can propose this. The town council actually has to approve this. So that's, that's an item that, that I believe by charter, they approved. Where did this come from? We literally went to, and I can't speak for, for Cheryl, but Darien, Westport, a handful of towns, we looked at the selectmen's office. And it kind of matters because, as it turns out, you know, Darien has a much higher-paid town administrator and a lower-paid first selectman. And then other towns have different convoluted combinations of salaries. So we tried to look at the administrative office, the benchmark, and we're right there, but we were probably a little on the low side. This still probably keeps us a little on the low side, but it's the range of everybody else. But then I tried to look at it for the town size a little, but the base salary, I think, takes the first selectman up to, I think it's 155, if you ask. So I think we all agree it's, at least our group agreed to propose it here. It seemed like a very reasonable, about a thousand dollar a year change over the last four years.
We were, we were joking that, you know, given the number of hours that the first selectmen, whoever.
We were, we were joking that, you know, given the number of hours that the first selectman, whoever he is, is required to spend.
He or she.
He or she.
We we did not divide it by rate per hour.
Yeah, on an hourly basis, might be less than minimum wage.
I was just going to say that, absolutely.
My God, we're in trouble.
We we have, am I on? We we have always sort of had a philosophy in this town to try and keep our first selectman on the. Higher side. And we have in consistency with Greenwich. And we're still, we're still in that range. Other towns have caught up a little bit more. But, yeah, I mean, compared to Darien, New Kane, and Wilton, and Weston, I think that's about the right, the right ball field. So we're. We're we're within our our goals.
Other. This other, other, other questions on the expenditure and revenue line item changes?
Just one, I think, two things, I think, Todd. One, we can't, we can't repeat often enough. That the COVID expenses that the Board of Ed expects to incur. We're still going to fully fund those.
Yeah.
It's just that we we took them out of the operating budget because we don't know what they're going to be.
Right.
But our commitment is obviously that we'll cover those expenses.
Yep. I said that in my opening comments, and we said it before, but you're right, you it's you can't say it enough. Whatever they are, they are, and that's what we're going to fund. But we just don't know what they are. We don't know if there are any other offsetting. And our revenues coming our way. So regardless, we'll we'll fund it. We just have to be with actual facts.
And and the other thing I think that's noteworthy, because I think it's the first time, at least since I've been on the board, that we've done it, is to use some of the police, police. Recom- compensation fund to actually cover some of their capital requirements in terms of.
Yeah.
The replacing the patrol cars. Which I I think is the first time we've done that. Since I've been on the board anyway.
I don't know if Linda or Amy, you want to go through that a little bit? It's the service fund for extra duty.
Sure, I was, I was going to talk about that when we talk about the capital. But yes, when we looked at that police, no, that's fine. When we looked at the police extra duty, you see on here that. We have seven hundred and fifteen thousand from the police extra duty fund. Coming into the general fund as as a revenue, which reduces. The amount to be raised on taxation. But we also reduced the police tax supported capital by a hundred and eight thousand, because we're also using those funds. To pay for police capital that we would have paid through tax support. Those are expenses under fifty thousand or so. And therefore, instead of using the general fund to pay for those, we're going to use this police extra duty fund. To pay for those. And then the balance in that fund is coming to the general fund to. To offset the need to raise taxes to meet those expenses.
Yeah, Linda, along this line, we chatted about this, and this is again from June thirty twenty numbers. So. There were a whole bunch of special revenue funds. And the police fund being one of them that you're transferring and transferring them in. I see the the parking as well. But remember, we went through these point by point, somewhere with the schools. And the town clerk even had a balance in it at that time. We had the movie theater building fund had a humongo balance in it. A number of these. That I'm guessing that you looked at the balances more currently from the June thirtieth, and that we were hoping that we could have. There'd be other. Cleaning up the excess funds that would roll into this this budget. You know, the school, the schools themselves have three different funds. They had a lot of money in lunch fund and some other things. So just wondering, did those all get scrubbed to what was? What we could pull out? And and apply them to current capitals?
Yes, we we did look at those funds that were there. We did not do anything with. Any of the school funds, because some of those are, some of those are grant funds and and their requirements, and therefore, we we can't, we likely go. And sweep those funds. And therefore, we did not, we did not do anything with those funds. We did look at the other, the town funds, for example. Some of them have restrictions in in what you could do. For example, we initially thought we could do something with the parking, and then after research, we found that the parking was set up. As an enterprise only for parking related expenses. And therefore, we could potentially use it for parking capital, but we can't use it. To offset property taxes in the general fund. And we did the same thing with. With the extra duty fund, we've, we found out that in this instance, we actually could. Because we do charge an administrative amount to offset those expenses. And it had been accumulating over time, and therefore, we could pay capital and transfer some into into the general fund. The the movie theater fund was one we looked at, but. We know that the movie, the building itself, there's some additional capital requirements that are upcoming. And therefore, the the guidance group that looked at it said that rather than clean that out, move to the general fund. We should probably leave those funds in that fund. And if there are any movie theater related expenses, rather than bond or or tax for those funds. We could use that. There's a big roof replacement project depending on. Who takes ownership of that project? There may be some additional expenses necessary to accommodate the transition. And that would be the source of those expenses.
Okay.
One other thing, Linda, just to remember this, this, you have to fix this, this summary sheet. You've still got the seven hundred thousand coming out of the parking fund. That's the trade off with the.
Yes.
General fund, just to make sure we capture that line items, not, that's not happening. Okay. Should we move to capital? Are there any other questions on this? Look, Linda, great job. And I think to.
This one, sorry.
Go ahead, but Amy.
Okay, because I I don't think this is right in terms of how it's recorded, not that the numbers aren't right. The Recreation Administration. There's a fifteen thousand dollar. Fields use expense. Now, I think that's related to the fact that everybody is supposed to make a contrib- to make a contribution. If they participate in. A program run. You know, for the New Kane Athletic Foundation, right? So that's really not. It's really not. It's you, you charge someone and it goes out, right? And it was just. I think one program was not necessarily getting charged for that. So I just. I'm just making sure, because it's really just a pass through.
Right. And what you're saying is actually right. So you see this fifteen, seven fifty field usage. There's a corresponding offset up here for the same amount. So it's just an in and out. But because it's an expense in Banco's budget that he doesn't have spending authority for. We create the expense so he can charge two, but then there's also corresponding revenue. To make that expense. So that's why it's.
Charge for some, not others. That's, I'm just want to make sure we're consistent. Some some got charged last year, some didn't. So this is. Basically reflecting of the assumed number of kids who are going to participate in this program at a dollar amount, right? I just want to make sure. Get to the athletic.
The recreation, the recommission looked at this and and they sent us, they sent us these numbers based on the rate, the projections of activities and so forth.
So from the rec department or the athletic foundation? Who's who sent it to you?
It was the commission in coordination with the foundation.
Okay. Okay.
So. Any other questions on these items? I just want to go back to the revenues and the expenses if we're. We're good there. I'd like to go through the capital. And again, we're not voting on this tonight. This is where we are, right? So a lot of work, puts and takes. And we'll get this cleaned up for everybody for Thursday.
A question. Yeah. Linda, on the, what did you say about the pool? I thought that the bonding for the pool, that all of that was paid off. Is it this year or coming? I remember when we had that committee. Isn't that?
FY twenty two, FY twenty two is when the bonds are are paid off.
So what did you just say that we're changing in in the pool fund? What I I I think I don't understand.
No, I said we are not doing anything with a pool fund. Well, we looked at these funds, and the pool fund is one that. We can't pull money out of the pool fund to put into the general. So we didn't do anything.
It's a very specific agreement. It's a very tight, tightly worded. It was worked on forever. Okay, so that's being left alone the way it should be.
Yes.
Linda, what can we talk about?
Other item on this, on this page, just keep in mind the the corridor. Katrina has said she'd like to discuss. I got that message from her today. So hopefully, we'll have a chance to talk tomorrow. And I will have the report back for Thursday.
All right.
Okay.
I just want to clarify something. As far as the cafeteria fund at the school. That we determined that it could be used for capital improvements to the cafeteria?
Yeah, that that was hazy. That that was nine hundred and fifty six thousand dollars at the end of.
Yeah.
Uh, end of twenty twenty, and the thought was obviously not to use it for something that's not school related, but for school stuff. That was a big. As well as the summer learning fund was two hundred and fifty four thousand. It's just. It look, if people need a cushion, I get it. But if if we can apply money back, that would be great. To 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 the specific areas, obviously.
We didn't come to any conclusion, though, right?
We were going to check on that. Um.
Because there were three of the funds that were definitely school related. There was school lunch fund. Now, it could have been overstated at year end, obviously. The summer learning fund was almost a, it was a quarter. Or, yeah. A quarter of a million. There was a facilities rental fund. I wasn't sure whether that's schools or not. That was two hundred thousand. Especially project funds. I mean, there's a lot of funds.
Yeah, yeah.
And we should just, if we need them, fine. But if we don't need them, let's pay for capital.
I mean, if they, if they're trapped in the organizations and, you know, where where they are, and we can't. Pull them back like they're enterprise funds or inside the 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 school system, fine, but let's let's start using them. You know, to the benefit of the overall budget.
Going to make a suggestion for this budget. We. That's an ongoing conversation I think we can have with the Board of Ed. I think Linda and Joanne can have that. I believe that. Fund, the cafeteria fund, if I remember from our conversation with the Board of Ed, they had worked that down to something like five hundred thousand dollars. So that balance in June is is, I believe, much lower. But I think, I I don't, I would say, Amy, let's raise it as a, an ask and a to do to use those funds for those things. Are you saying? Anything different than that?
No, no, we had talked about this earlier, that we were trying to. You know, it's great, we have reserves, but let's not overhead reserve. And if we have them in a special area, let's put that money to work for that area. I'm not saying throw it in the general fund. I'm saying. You know, if it's for the summer learning fund, great. If it's for the school lunch, great. Let's apply that against their expenses.
Yeah, I I I think we leave them alone. I do think we raise them and discuss how to optimize them. And I, again, I think the Board of Ed thinks about that all the time, but it is, it is worth, it is worth asking.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about that. You know, I thought we were cleaning up our funds every year. I thought we all said that every year we would at a certain time go through and see them. And I guess, why are we finding out about them later? Were they just not obvious or listed a different way? Or, you know, Linda and I sat sat down with Amy once, and I think we came up, Amy, with a million. Million five or something.
Anymore. But and and it wasn't just school stuff. I had no way. We're just looking at every single fund. This is not directed to anybody.
That's a different point, Neil. That's important. Actually, go ahead. I think, Linda, you looked at, I I think it was called the Special Projects Fund, which immediately. It gets a red, a red line through it. What are, what's a special projects fund? But when you teased it apart, you, there were actually legitimate funds. Reserved or raised or assigned for certain things. And you want to give an update on that? Is that something, if you don't have the details, you can, you can bring it on Thursday night.
No, no, I'm, I shared the, I shared the balances with you. I believe it was at the January meeting, they were on your tablets. And they're reported in the CAFER. So we looked at all of those balances. And you did see that, you know, there was some school funds, the cafeteria funds, the the summer learning funds. And 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 those are funds that you have to have a discussion with the Board of Education. Those are created for specific programs. And there are restrictions in terms of what you can do with those. And that's why, as part of this budget. We did not touch any of those school related funds until that discussion is had, just to understand what those funds are for. And I believe we heard from Dr. Keating. As far as the school cafeteria fund, the the cash flow. Challenges that were going on with COVID and whatnot, and they had initially planned to fund. Some internal service health expenses, and and that was reversed just based on on their analysis of those. So we did not do anything with with the school special revenue fund.
That's the answer.
We did look, but we did look at the town revenue funds and determined. Those that we could were the ones that we attempted to use in this budget. But as you call, you know, we thought we could do something with the parking. We found out that we couldn't. And we ended up with only the police extra duty fund was one that we could do. We can apply for the general fund.
They all got picked up on the cash.
Is, and and I don't believe this is school related. Is the special project fund? I don't think that's school. I could be wrong, but that was.
So the special, the special project funds, if you look at that page on the CAFER. They're individual budgets. It's it's a sum of small projects. There's like, money was donated for the ice rink. Money was donated. And so on that page of the CAFER. The individual projects that sum up to the total identify. And all of those donations to those projects. Are restricted. Like, for example, part of that nine hundred thousand is about a hundred and twenty thousand for the food pantry. Which makes up that special project. We can't use the, we did use the food pantry this year. To reduce some general fund expenses that Human Services has. In terms of assistance, and they're going to be tapping the food pantry fund. To meet those expenses as opposed to meeting of the general fund. So in in places where you can do those things. We did, but those funds, there's some, I mean, we could do some additional research. But a majority of those funds are created for a specific purpose and and their restrictions.
So even it seems like a big number, it's not, because it's it's segregated to discreet purposes. So and the only other.
Correct.
A big balancing, and it is a big balance, is the movie theater fund, and that's kind of on hold, trying to figure out what we're going to do with that. Is that fair to say?
Exactly.
Hey, Todd, another, Todd, another thing that should be said, all these special funds. Are are revenues that come in, not from either taxpayer dollars or fees from residents. But they're they're derived from other sources. So.
Right.
And and usually, they're intended to be used for other purposes.
Right. So that's. I just think in the cash management project, it opened up a lot of questions, but as you said, there are a few places where it made some sense, and there's a lot of places where these things have goods. A good story or a legal reason or some other thing that's just too specific. But that's, I think people are asking and reasking those questions. Right, but I, yeah. Yeah, so I don't know, Amy, if there's a follow up from your questions, I I think. I, Linda, I mean, if there's something else that we feel like we need to answer for Thursday, we can do a little homework and get back. But I I think.
Sounds like it looks for every one of them, and where you could free up, you did, and when you entered in.
Yeah, exactly. And I I know I can speak, I don't, I can't speak for the Board of Ed, but I think that they are really diligent about this and and recognize what they can use the funds for and not, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Todd, it looked to me like Brendan Hayes was trying to comment. Brendan.
You have a question? I'm sorry, I got my screen on. Don't see any hands up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I I just, you know, I. I encourage you all to to read the the letter that Katrina sent over, but I just, I find it. Really just shocking that we're getting cut by three million dollars, you know, this year. And I. And I appreciate that you're saying no, because you'll just fund the money when it's spent. But. This is a massive operation that requires extremely careful planning. Well in advance, it starts in the spring, in April and May. We can't. We can't move forward. Unless our budget's fully funded, we just can't. So I just. I really, I realize the vote isn't tonight, but I I just, I don't understand it. I don't understand why it has to be done. And if it's going to be fully funded, that's fully funded. So that we can actually plan for the school year. So I just plead with you. You know, after this year of all years, you know, to see that cut. And I know you think, oh, it's not that big of a deal, because you'll fund it down the road. But it is a big deal. We cannot. Move forward with the school year and the planning for the school year, which happens in April and May, unless we have full funding. I just, I I didn't want to say that earlier. I didn't want to speak earlier, but I just, I I cannot believe that. What I'm looking at on the screen is three million dollars of cuts. It's just. It's shocking.
Yeah, it's really not right to classify those as cuts. I don't, I don't think that's fair. And so. And so I appreciate the comment and obviously the happy to have you join, just out of respect for you and your role on the Board of Ed. But I don't, I can't can't agree, I don't think this board agrees, these are cuts, these are, we're deferring these until we have the facts, so. Okay, let's keep going on the capital then. All right, questions on capital requests, change changes? This is basically just the notes around all the things that were puts and takes that we agreed to in those conversations. London, anything you want to shout out?
Yeah, quickly.
No, I just want, I highlighted.
I'm sorry, Linda, because I'm looking at the one on my tablet, are you on thirty six? Oh, there it is.
I am on page thirty six, yeah.
Okay.
So I'm just going to walk through, it's only five pages and you you've heard all of these presentations and the numbers. So what I did here was just capture some of the changes that 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 we talked about in in going through the capital budget. So the first area, there were no changes made on the first page, on page thirty six. We did make changes. With. With emergency management, you recall that. The Motorola agreements, initially, I believe it was like a two hundred some thousand and and Russ presented an updated number. So we revised that number to what to the to the correct number. The the signage was originally twenty thousand and we doubled it to forty. And then the generator packs were sixty to fifty and we doubled those to twelve to twelve five. So that was the change on the emergency management. All the other requests stayed as 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 were presented to you. Then the other change was the the potty shed. Initially, the potty shed was in at two hundred and forty nine thousand, I believe. And that was pushed forward to the second year, two fifty to the year twenty two, twenty three. And in year one, we only kept forty thousand, which was basically the. Some design, design funds, but not the full project in this fiscal year.
Hey.
And the other change, and this is significant, go ahead, Amy.
Yeah, on this page also, shoot, I just lost the spot. Next page, sorry, good, good, sorry, good.
Okay. So the other change on this page were two Board of Board of Ed projects. I believe both are related to their CHP program. And the projects have been kept whole, the dollar amounts have been kept whole. But the instruction was similar to what we did with the other CHP project last year, to fully fund the project, but to have it under. Under town buildings and therefore it moves it out of the Board of Ed capital into the town building capital for project management purposes, but no change to the to the dollar amounts. So that that's the proposal that we have. So that's a change to the capital and therefore you see that increase, there will be a corresponding increase on the total amount of the Board of Ed capital, because that 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 one is moved. The playground was kicked out a year, so we had four fifty in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. That goes out to twenty two, twenty three, so that one was zeroed out.
Did we say we were going to take a closer look at the New Canaan Athletic Foundation Master Plan? The three hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
But we were just going to get a better understanding of what that three hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty two and the following five years, what that represents?
At present, it's just a placeholder.
Yeah. Also, Luna, the one that I was trying to was the, the, sorry, Tiger, on this one, the Town Hall Annex. And spending all the money to make that hard in terms of, so that on those power outage days that the people who are in Human Services have a hundred percent power. And I just, I really struggled with this one. This is a building, we didn't know what the heck we were going to do with it, whether we're going to keep it, tear it down or whatever. And for that much money, for the days, you know, the number of days you might not have power. I just think that's a lot of money when you pick up your laptop and you go next door. And I know it's for seniors and I know it it gets more complicated, but nobody has hard files anymore. I mean.
It's a lot more complicated than that. What I what I'd like to do is I can have Bethany come Thursday and, you know, discuss her feelings on this as well. You know, it directly affects her operations. You know, I've spoken to her a couple of times on it, I've given you, you know, my idea on it and and our reasoning for it. You know, we've looked at other alternatives. And this is probably the the best alternative for us as as to to storm harden that building.
But I mean, it's a lot of money in like, and I know, no one knows how many days you're going to be out with stuff, right? But if we've learned anything in COVID, people can adapt and be flexible for short period of times. We've done it all for a year and it just seems like a lot of money to spend on a building that we didn't even know we were going to keep, you know, so when we.
Now we have, now we got town hall offices in it, that's the problem.
It's it's just, and and as we look at this, we have this, we're all going through this and the bottom number is enormous, the amount of money that we're looking at.
Hey, Tiger.
Yeah, Kevin.
Another consideration, though, is that during ECE, the Human Services people were actually working at the Police Department with the ELC team, so.
They were, it normally, yeah, that becomes problematic for them. In 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 times past, it was always problematic to try to work inside that building while the ELC was in operation, especially for a longer duration.
But I mean, they used to be in Vine Cottage, not that that was ideal, I'm not saying that. And and we never talked about hardening Vine Cottage. I just, if you could do everything, it'd be great, but if you we go down this line for the amount of capital, we're trying to figure out, it's a really big number. You know, and at some point, this is when we have to kind of go, what what can we afford? I feel, I don't know if anyone else feels the same way, maybe it's.
I tend to feel that way too, Amy.
The numbers, it doesn't seem like a big number, but it's like a, you know, a bunch of numbers like this, all of a sudden, a million dollars that you don't have to do, so.
Tiger, just a thought, how many of those generator packs would it take to to support?
Oh, God.
That building, I mean, is it even, is it even a reach?
No.
You you can't.
It's not within reach of a of a of stringing those together and trying to trying to put it together for her, no.
And the backup generator, I think I asked this question, but the backup generator we purchased for the town, that doesn't work for what reason?
We never purchased a backup generator for the town. What we did was we repurposed an existing.
Repurposed it, right, that's a better way of saying.
Not, it's not suitable for that, the size of that is is a smaller unit, similar to Vine Cottage or or the Meat Park Lodge, things of that nature, but not for that building itself.
But would it work in an emergency basis?
No. We would only, I don't, I don't know what it would, I don't know what it would handle, I don't think it could handle what's AC or the heating aspect of it. It wouldn't be able to do those those types of units, that type of work.
The little generators are single phase. In order to run that building, you need a three phase generator.
Like I said, what I'd like to do is just have Bethany come in, she can plead her case, and if you want to cut it at that time, that's great, but I'd rather not before it's, you know, before she's able to. Show a little bit, you know. And it's a hundred and twenty, not the hundred and forty, it's a hundred and forty's total for the building, it's a hundred and twenty. Split up between the transfer switches and the materials at seventy two thousand and then trenching and other work to try to get from town hall over.
Well, if they were located not next to Town Hall, this wouldn't even be a discussion, right? Because it wouldn't be feasible. Okay.
Items you want to highlight there, Linda?
Yeah, I'm going through to see if there's any more. Okay, so then we're we're down to the schools and I know, Todd, at the last meeting, this was the. This is a roof that's waiting some additional, I believe, we're waiting on some funding on the bids. You asked me to drop this number down, I think we had a total of seven million, three and a half, two and a half. And so you said to drop it to two and two and then we'll make additional additions when we know. I don't know when we know those numbers, but.
Yeah, I think what Joanne said was she, the number had gone from seven to four to five and without another better number, let's just leave this in here for now and we'll adjust it when we actually have the actual, the estimates and the facts. Does everyone agree with that approach?
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's two hundred and then there is. There was one hundred thousand for engineering related to that project that's. It was separated out, I believe.
In capital or operating?
It was in capital, I believe it's the. Yeah, this is.
That's part of the high school, yeah, no, I think that's part of the bid and we have to just understand what it's for and all the, yeah, just, I think we just have to get that.
So there's.
That's my understanding of of it, is there a question?
No, I was just, I was just highlighting the changes and those are the changes between the. From what from what was presented to you.
Yeah, but.
So Linda, are we are we saying we're going to move the current estimate of two million this next year and two million the year after, depending on what Joanne comes back and says the actual bids are going to be? So that's going to move to over to the town side? Are we moving the hundred thousand for the? Whatever that's called for the high school roof also, are we moving that over, the engineering services? Is that moving to the town as well?
Yeah.
No, this is not on the town side, the roof, the roof right now is still on the Board of Ed side.
Oh, okay, okay.
The roof is still on the Board of Ed together with the the.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you.
Is is from the discussion, is two million low? I mean, were they, I thought they were talking seven.
It was four to five, the last thing she said was four to five, we could put in two and a half, I I would put in anywhere you want, I guess, we don't know is the point, it's not seven and she said four to five. Pick pick a number you'd like to put in there, does it don't, until we get a final result, it's.
Yep.
It's a placeholder, Amy, so we can pick any number between two and three. Or two and two and a half. Per year, right?
If I may, Todd, I'm on on here tonight, we're out to bid right now, we're going to be receiving the bids in another week or so. So you'll have more heart, you know, more exact numbers.
Perfect, is this okay for your, from your point of view, for a placeholder, the two and the two for now?
Definitely, yeah, for right now, and it might go up a little, might come down a little, we'll see what happens.
Perfect, thanks, Joanne.
Linda, what's our dollar amount for cutoff for tax funded versus bonded? Are we at fifty or sixty or?
We were at fifty, with some exceptions, for example, moving stocks, for example, the sped, the sped vehicle is sixty one five. We put that in tax supported capital and I think there's, we did similar things last year, but right now generally it's fifty.
Okay.
And that's the number.
And that puts our tax capital, it puts our tax capital at one point seven this year compared to two point two last year.
This is a big number.
Yeah.
This so. So 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 how do we address this twenty million dollar? Number?
Well, you have the Police Department there.
Sure, so that you push that up.
Oh, push that out, so, yeah.
Easy, so that's.
Yeah.
That's seven and a half.
Actually, the one you ought to consider, the one you ought to consider accelerating is is the library. You've only got three, three and. Linda, what do you have, two from last year, three and then three?
I believe so.
It assumed that you funded two million last year, which isn't.
Again.
So the total line should be ten million.
Right. So so if we if we assume that the Police Department pushes off a year, which is, I think, a pretty safe assumption, right?
I wouldn't necessarily assume that. But it's a bonded item anyway, if you decide you can bring the bonded item anytime you want.
True, but you you want to show show some discipline on how much you're queuing up to bonding.
It just, it just so happens that we have two projects coming together at the same time. The library is pretty definite, I mean, you know, to be shoveling the ground in June and the and and the Police Department could very well start next year, within next year.
Well, we don't have the disposition on the plan either, right, for the police extension, so. Don't know what the actual plan is, if there's.
Lots of stuff up in the air on that one.
What matters is when the rubber hits the road and what are we actually going to go bond, right? So we could leave it in, we could take it out, but it's it's, I think you're, I think, I don't have a problem leaving it in as a discipline and a reminder, I don't, it doesn't mean we're going to spend the money. We might only bond ten to fifteen million.
Yep.
The real number is the tax supported number, that's that's.
Right.
That's pretty certain, I would say, for the most part.
You know, I would love to see us continue to push up the minimum dollar amount for our bonding. Because that is something that really will help us stay disciplined and and that we only are bonding much longer term projects, so if we kind of keep.
We could do this, I think, for Thursday, Linda, you could run a cutoff of just make the number up seventy five thousand and see what that does. And then just, let's let's have that for Thursday and we can make a decision with some facts, is that fair?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Okay, okay, other to do's for Thursday, we've got the quarter review with Katrina. We've got the tax funded level. And some of the ins and outs we discussed. Other questions, team, that have been, understand, so that we can get a. Final package to get over to town.
And the the Board of Ed liaison guys, if if we're trying to approach the COVID expenditures. Reflective of when we when we know there are hard expenses for them, do we know, is the Board of Ed, is they're they're moving into their next budget? Do do is there is there some of this expense that they know they're going to need earlier that we that we have to kind of, do we have to do anything to queue up for them so they're not behind the eight ball if we approach it this way? Like, if they know they have to spend X amount of money to buy something or do something.
Well, for example, the the permanent part time subs.
Right, yeah, that's a good example.
That's a half a million dollars, they're going to have to know whether they have jobs on July first or not.
Right, so that, I mean, if we're going to try to do this this way, we don't want to do it in a way that makes it impossible for them to do their jobs. We're just trying to, I guess. Not over. Commit on unknowns, but if if there are knowns in there, we should we should make sure that.
Let's just review, let's review the bidding, we spent a lot of time on this. So a couple of things, this was for a future appropriation to be put in a non lapsing account for next year. This first nine hundred thousand dollars, that was the first proposal. And the thinking there was immediately, we shared and said, don't do that, there's no need to do that, we'll make that a special appropriation when you know you need it. If it's July, it's July, if it's August, it's August, if it's October, it's October. And secondly, there's a four hundred and forty two thousand dollar grant that's coming back there that could offset some of that nine hundred thousand dollars. That was kind of that first piece, the second piece, even, you know, Joanne mentioned in our meeting, not sure what that one point of the COVID related one will be, there could be some adjustments that, that's fine, we don't need a final number. I think, I think there's too many other balls in the air to worry about at this point, just know when you know and when you have that expense, we'll be here to fund it, just like we were before, but let's just make sure we have the. But let's just make sure we have the details. We need the facts. That does, that's the, that's the whole point of making sure we've got it right. As it turns out, and by luck, maybe we might get some reimbursement from one, one for that terrific. Um, but we're not planning on that. We're planning on funding it at actual, when we have the details and the facts. That was the complete. I would say unanimous point of view from liaisons, um, to just provide that, those funds as needed when we have actuals.
Hey Todd, but that, that particular item is a, is a health expense.
Both items. The nine hundred was for the, was for the special.
No, but that's actually for, for expended. Uh, resources to deal with COVID such as permanent part-time subs. But the one point two million in the internal service fund, I think is expected ex, health expenses because of the delay. And people, um.
Yeah.
Because of COVID, that may not occur, or if it does occur, it probably is reserved for within the existing.
That's the reason to defer this for now.
Right.
We have those facts. Literally, that's exactly right. So we'll defer it and we'll, we'll, we'll fund it when we know what it is, if it even happens.
Can I just confirm, um, Todd? Can you hear?
Yep. I think I can hear you, but I think you dropped. Yeah.
Judy, you muted.
I'm, I did this. Why it's not staying? Okay. Can you hear me? Yeah. Um, I thought, and, and correct me, I thought that the monies for the, uh. The permanent subs and the custodians and the benefits, the package, the commitment. Cause I think it's contractual, if I remember right. That was all to be part of a commitment for the. Um, for the special appropriation and anything else that we needed. So I think we need to come up with a number that, um. Moves that part ahead, assuming the, even if we know the four hundred and forty thousand dollars is coming back. That should probably be in place.
Yeah. Well, what, what, if it's okay with you, all of you, what I can do is we'll get those details. Our working group will get those details from Katrina tomorrow and make sure we got that for Thursday. That, that's fair? That work?
But I think we should put it in, um, uh. As, as a one-off item again, segregating these COVID, uh, expenses so that they don't become part of a baseline.
That's right.
I get that.
Yep. Yeah, any other comments from Michael or George or, or Chris? I mean, that was the, the thinking behind those two items was very specific. Until we had the details, we really weren't a position to commit funds. And tax the taxpayers. Um, we were committed to this once we got the details and facts. Um, understood that, right? George, that fairway to summarize.
I think that was our thinking. I mean, um. If, if we have to include the four hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand for the. COVID temps, oh, I, if we have to agree to pre-fund that so that the board of Ed can go ahead and, and sign those employment contracts. It still has to be kept outside of the normal operating budget for the board of Ed. The only other thing is I know that Neil and I had asked for some additional information on, uh, the SACS. CHP and boiler, uh, programs, and we got some of that information, uh, this after, uh, this morning from, uh. From Joanne, but we haven't really, haven't had a chance to look at it yet, uh, or talk to her about it. So, um. We think the SACS number should be kept there, but, but, uh, as a placeholder until we can really get our head around it a little bit better, if that's okay.
Yeah, leave it as is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other feedback from the board members for now on this and then we'll, uh. Get this all buttoned up for, uh, any other questions, any loose ends tomorrow and, and have that it again on Thursday. Going once?
Just get, you're going to run, um, the capital for anything seventy-five and below. On a current basis. Is that possible? So we.
I'm going to run that and I'll, I'll email that to you tomorrow morning.
That'd be great.
And a revised budget because it'll have impact on, it'll have impact on the general fund. The mill rate and the amount to be raised in taxation, um. Additional expenses.
And, uh, so you'll have to update the, uh, the, um, the changes, uh, page, the first page.
And, and this one, the, the second one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, Linda, one other thing, do you happen to have the history of what we, and we always, we always say we're going to use a lot from the general fund. But then we actually end up using not so much of it. Do you, do you have the trend for that over like five years? Like we said, we use five, four and a half, but we.
We have it. We have it. We did it. We've got it. Linda's got it. Linda, send that out to everybody. Was that in the packet? I didn't see it.
No, it wasn't a packet. It was just an email to you. I did a full year.
That should be in the packet. So send that out to everybody. It's, it's actually fascinating.
Yeah. So that, that, that will give comfort if we're spiraling, we're going to pull a lot down while we, maybe we don't, you know, so.
Yeah, you'll see that. It's been, um. It's, uh, you'll, you'll see the data. It's unbelievable, actually. We, we don't use any of it.
And let's use it for capital. Let's pay for some stuff with current money.
I will also say the town has underspent four years in a row. I don't know that that's in our future for the next four years. It's gotten pretty lean. We gotta be so. We'll have to scrutinize this a little bit tougher, that's for sure.
But I, I agree with you, Amy. If, if, if in fact there, um, there's an opportunity to use some of that, uh. To, uh, increase the amount of, uh, taxpayer funded capital. Uh, without increasing the, not to be raised from, from taxation, I think that's the smart play.
Yep. That's, that's the long-term win for everybody.
Right.
Well, we talked about applying maybe a million of it to the library instead of bonding for it, you know, bond for eight million, not ten.
Or the police station. Doesn't really matter which.
That's right. All TBD.
The only point on that is if you look at the following year's budget for capital is close to thirty million. You may want to use some of that when it comes to thirty million that year. So let's not use it all up and have nothing to use against the thirty million capital the year forward.
That's right. Yeah, that's a multi-year model. That's, you started to work on Michael, remember?
Yeah, yeah. So this, this, this not look.
If, if those reserves get paid down, uh, materially. Uh, we, we're not re, you know, we don't have the excess collections anymore because, you know, we're at ninety-eight and a half. And, uh, the town is running pretty lean, so the underspend is, uh. Uh, is, is not as, uh, dramatic as before. So we've got to be careful that, uh. You know, how much we take out of that, uh, reserve?
Well, that's why we keep waiting on that guideline, between fifteen and eighteen percent is a good guideline, um, to stay with and use as an anchor.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, go ahead. Forget it.
Any other comments on the budget? If not, we can, um, we'll reconvene Thursday. Are we clear on all of our to-dos? I think we are. Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Motion, again, motion to adjourn?
Judy.
Judy, second. Michael, all in favor? I oppose none. Okay. Thank you all. See you Thursday.
Thank you.